It is 6:00 PM on April 22, 2025, and I'm called this Lacey City Council work session to order. Councilmember Dunning is attending remotely, and Councilmember Stedman is going to be a few minutes late, but all of their council is present. Also, I want to acknowledge that we, the city of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Nisqually Indian Tribe and the Squawks Indian Tribe. With that, can I get a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as published?
Second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in care of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. We have an approved agenda. First up is public comments. Anyone from the public? Seeing none. Then let's go straight into our first agenda item, which is our community economic development update. Sarah.
Good evening. Thanks for having me tonight. Before we get started, I think there is a map available to you guys in your materials, but I have our copies. Those are easier for you to follow along.
It's in here.
And this, right? Okay. All right. Thank you. It's been a while since I've been in front of council. Refresh my memory. So, thanks, and good evening, everybody. Tonight, I'm going to here to give you a brief update of the private development activities taking place right now in Lacey. This presentation is mostly going to be our current projects under review. There's a couple new ones that we've recently received. A lot of these are updates of what you have seen, updates from December, when I was here last, in addition to some new permit numbers. So, we'll go ahead and get started with the permit numbers. We'll do both land use and building permit numbers to start the presentation.
Or not?
Or not. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. We'll start with land use applications. So, we have here quasi, both quasi judicial and administrative land use applications, as well as completed applications back from 2021 up through 2025. Our 2025 numbers are early numbers. We haven't typically given the numbers at this stage in the development update before because it's pretty early to show really what the year is going to look like. We do look a little low, however, compared to last year in terms of administrative reviews for the land use permits. Last year, at this same time, we had 10 applications for administrative review and one in for quasi judicial review. Our numbers were the same, oh, thank you so much, for quasi judicial review in 2024 and 2025. And when we're talking about these different types of land use applications, when we're talking about administrative review, these are your typical land use applications, site plan reviews, boundary line adjustments, major commercial projects, and then quasi judicial reviews are subdivisions, conditional use permits, things that require hearings examiner review. Those are typically lower in numbers than regular site plan review or administrative review would be. Whoops. Let's go back one.
Which, what project had the quasi judicial review?
This year. It's their, their public works projects. So, lift stations. We had a lift station. There was also, and I think that it was reviewed this year as well, a PRD or received its final approval, the PRD for the lodge project. That was either late 2024 or early 2025. When we're looking at commercial and industrial building permits, for 2025, again, this is valid through April 15. The numbers in 2024, during the same time period, we had one new commercial application and 80 tenant improvements, and your tenant improvement permits are going to be, we're going to have a lot more, you'll see a lot more tenant improvement permits throughout the year. The commercial permit, the new commercial permit is typically the shell of a commercial building, and you fill that with tenant improvement permits for all the suites and all the additional users within the building. And so, our tenant improvement permits will be higher, generally speaking. Let's see. So, 80 tenant improvements last year and one new commercial project during the same period last year. For, we are going backwards now. We'll look at other permitting activities. I don't think this is too terribly far off from what we've been historically in 2023 and 2024. Forty-one re-roof permits so far this year. I didn't pull the numbers for the same time from 2024. But I think if you look at pre-application meetings, so far this year, we have pre-application meetings two times a month, and 24 pre-application meetings, I think is a pretty good sign that there's still interest in commercial activity thus far in the year. And we've had pre-application meetings for subdivisions, for small commercial projects, lots of very different types of users who are really interested in moving forward. So, I think that is a good sign of people hoping to move forward with some projects. And then housing starts, and I want to make a note about the housing starts. 2025 looks very stark compared to even 2024 at this same time. I was looking through these materials as I was preparing tonight, and the multifamily permits in particular, what this number is, the two is permits, and the other numbers across the chart when you're talking about multifamily is units. I did go back and look at what those two multifamily permits look like in terms of unit numbers. And in 2025, so, so far this year, we have two multifamily permits in for 107 units. So, that's, I think, a better picture than what you see on the screen for just two multifamily building permits. The same period in 2024, we actually only had 53 multifamily units, and we do have additional units in the, in the pipeline. Single family units, so far, we have three single family permits for the start of the year. However, in our project pipeline, and you'll see the three single family subdivisions, as well as some of the commercial projects, but in our pipeline, we have about 1,200 units that are ready to come, waiting to come online. So, they have land use approval, but they don't have final building permits, or they don't have final inspections. So, they're not, or they don't have their final building permits at this point. And the same is true with single family. We have at least three single family subdivisions that have preliminary land use approval for about 400 single family units, some of which will come on this year, and we'll see what those look like as we go through the presentation. So, let's start going through the presentation. This one is very familiar to you guys. I think I've talked to you about it four times in the last two years. This is the Seventh Avenue apartment project. And MJR is still planning on moving forward with this project. This is 376 units with 18,000 square feet of ground floor commercial. They have land use approval through May of this year. So, they need to vest their project site with a permit and some construction activity. We are in regular contact with MJR and their, their representative, and should have some more information about when they plan to pull their permit. As of just a couple weeks ago, they still plan on moving forward before this permit expires at the end of, at the end of May.
And Sarah, I'll add, their permit is ready to pick up.
It is ready to pick up.
So, this is really their schedule.
Yep. Yes.
And just that it will be before May, then, when it expires?
It will be before it expires. Yes, it expires at the end of May. They don't have, it was approved in May of 2023. They have two years to pull permits and begin site work. So, I will say they have already done some utility improvements. You've seen, see the evidence of that on Seventh Avenue to serve these buildings, as well as some of their other properties throughout Woodland Square.
Sarah, what is, what happens if they don't?
They would lose their land use vesting and have to go through the entitlement process again. So, they'd submit a-
If code has changed between 2023 and now, they'd also have to update their plan with all the new code.
Exactly. Exactly.
So, I think one of the big questions on, on this was, what are they going to do with their parking? Has their, have they figured that part out?
So, they have, as part of their land use application process, they needed to submit a parking, essentially a parking study to show what parking, what their parking ownership was throughout the district. We have ability within the code to allow shared parking and cross parking agreements. So, across all their ownership, they had adequate parking for all the uses that they intend. So, they pre-planned, showed us what they were going to do over time in Woodland Square Loop, and then showed us their parking counts, and they, with that, they met code requirements for parking. There's also some ability for them to, and they didn't want to do this, but they could, we have provisions that allow for reduced parking requirements based on nearness to transit and bus routes, as well as, the shared parking is one of the things that allows off-site parking to count towards onsite parking.
So, are you saying they are not billing the underground?
They are doing some part, some underground parking. Yes, they are doing some onsite to help to offset loss of that parking field. They're doing some underground, as well as some onsite parking or surface parking. And then Lacey Midtown 629 Woodland. This building is almost done. It looks like they're getting ready to, they've got the four lease sign up. Again, this is the office building conversion. It's 50 units. The community development staff got to go tour this building a few months ago. They've put together some really nice units, and they have the four lease sign up on their fence. And so, it looks like this is going to come online here in the next few weeks.
These mostly one bedrooms?
There's one and two bedrooms and studios. Yep. Yep. Some have views of the mountain. It's a nice, nice little building. They've done a really good job. Also associated with MJR and Woodland Square Loop that I don't have pictures of, these are just, they're continuing their investment in Woodland Square, the 640 building, which is immediately on the park. They've recently converted or completed a major tenant improvement of that building, and KPFF has taken the entire first floor. They've completed some exterior improvements for their restaurant, which is intended to open up on the park. We don't have TI permits for that yet. I don't know if they've signed that restaurant user at this point, but that's still in the works. And then a few weeks ago, one of the pre-submission conferences we had was with MJR and a proposal for what's called the yard, or they're calling it the yard, or the barn, or the farm stand.
Where's that going to be at?
Seventh and College. So, they own either side of Seventh Avenue, and on the larger side, their plan or their proposal is to put a small tap room, as well as have some outdoor amenities, potential fire pits, some yard games, gazebos, some open space, and then across the street, potentially some sport courts, maybe pickleball, volleyball, sand volleyball, or something to that effect, to serve as essentially a backyard or recreation space for their residents, their residents at 629, the hub, as well as their future residents. That's also open to the public, so an amenity for the public as well.
That's going to be right where the Roundabout is.
It is.
In the future, right? So, that's kind of right there.
Yes.
It'll be the, sort of an entrance into the midtown area, and there'll be a little something there.
Yep. Hopefully, by this, or by the time we do this in the fall, we'll have some images and potentially, they already submitted some, their request for Forester review on that site, and so, they certainly intend to move forward, and so, potentially, we may see some activity on that site in the next year. Should be exciting.
Sarah, before we, before we move on, the 629 Woodland, is that market rate housing?
It's market rate housing. Yes. It is. Yes. Yes. Yep. Let's see. So, we're going to move up 15th Avenue, where we have a lot of, where we continue to see multifamily development, as well as a little bit of single family. So, 15th Avenue, immediately adjacent to each other, are a couple of different, or a couple multifamily projects, Williams Crossing and Canfield Apartments. This is its sister site, immediately adjacent to each other. And so, this is 72 units and 252 units, respectively, of multifamily. They've got their entitlements, and they've begun site work. So, you'll see that they've started grading the site and doing their site work. These were recently annexed into the city. Their northern boundary is Greg Cuyo Park. I think one of them will at least have some access, or is preparing to have some access into the park. Also, adjacent to both of those projects, and also just recently annexed, or in 2024, this is property that was annexed into the city, is Ventura Crossing, and it's a single- city, is Ventura Crossing, and it's a single-family subdivision with fifty-three single-family detached homes and sixteen townhouse units on twelve and a half acres. They received their preliminary plat approval from Thurston County, but will be going through the civil drawing process and final plat with the city. They have also recently started clearing and doing the site and utility work for this project. The builder is Soundbuilt Homes.
Will the power lines go underground for this?
I believe they should. Further down Fifteenth Avenue, another project that we've had in the books and on the pipeline for a long time is the Hickory Project, Olympia Orthopedic and Pacific Cataract and Laser Institute. And these have both finally broken ground. So it's really good to see the Hickory commercial site starting to get redeveloped, or starting to get developed with some good quality medical uses. Pacific Cataract and Laser is really far along. I would anticipate they're probably targeting opening by sometime at the end of this year.
Do you know offhand how much, what square footage is on Olympia Orthopedic?
Twenty-five thousand.
Pretty big facility, right?
Twenty-five thousand. And then Pacific Cataract and Laser is eighteen thousand.
They look bigger than that.
And then immediately next door, at Britton Plaza, another project that's been on the books for a while. Britton Plaza originally started developing it probably in twenty-twelve, I would say, with McConie's on the corner, and then Providence Medical following. And it slowly started to really build out. Residents in by Marriott came in for their land use approval during COVID. It expired. They still want to move forward, so they've reinvested and gotten a new land use approval. Their intent is to move forward with this project. They got their land use approval towards the end of last year.
Is this one on the Hogan Bay side, or is this on the?
This is right next door to the Hickory, the Pacific Cataract and Laser. So it's just north of Britton Plaza, or Britton Parkway, not Hogan Bay Town Center yet. We have more hotels in just a couple slides. Also at Britton Plaza is one of their final commercial buildings. This is a twelve thousand square foot commercial building on Britton Parkway. They have a user in one of the suites. It's a gym and yoga facility that's going into this location. Britton Plaza has two additional lots, one just to the south. So, does this have a laser? The Marriott is on the long, the kind of the triangle portion on the-
In the middle?
Yeah. Whoops. Let's go back this way, sorry. The Marriott runs from the northern roadway to about, there we go. Is this me doing this, or is this? This is magic.
To that little divider, right?
Yeah, yes, exactly. And then there's a lot below that as well. And then there's one additional lot that could accommodate some drive-through as well.
Can you point, can you do that?
Can I? I'm not sure. Shannon might be able to.
Resident Inn is going?
Over. That's where the Marriott's going.
Behind the-
Yes, behind Providence. Yes, yes, right along the road. Yep.
Can't really see it from anywhere. Can't really see it.
Where the Marriott's going? Yeah, it's difficult. I apologize for that.
Like, from the street, you're not gonna be able to-
Oh, from the street? No.
From Marvin?
Yeah, and there's tree, there's a tree tract, too. There's a little strip of property between Britton Plaza. The same is true on the Hickory side. They're owned, they're actually small pieces, parcels that are owned by the tribe, that have trees on them in between the right-of-way and the Britton Plaza and the Hickory side as well. So they'll have height, I think it's a four-story hotel, so.
What's the Providence? Is that two?
Two-story.
It's two, yeah, yeah.
Which parcel was the resident in taking up? Are they taking up the two parcels, or the two back?
The top and the back, the one in the farm.
I thought it was gonna be downright on Britton Parkway for some reason.
No, there is another parcel there that was reserved for some, there's been banks that have been interested in it. And I think that's what the developer had been kind of targeting for that parcel there on the corner. This isn't working either.
Grown like crazy.
We broke it. We broke it.
You're gonna watch them build. We're driving there, we do.
Thanks. One more, Paul. This is the Britton Plaza commercial piece. I thought I'd take you up to DBATS. We talked about this one last time. This is now a completed commercial recreation facility, baseball, softball training, other types of athletic training in the facility, as well as they host birthday parties. It's owned by a local owner. This opened in February. Next, we have Hogan Bay Town Center. This is getting really close to build-out as well. Last time we were here, I don't think Humble Cow was open yet. Humble Cow is now open. The Jean Juarez Salon and Spa is open. A few remainder, remaining commercial spaces to come on. Cooper's Bar and Grill, they anticipate opening, Dough Zone, yep. Dough Zone is, Dough Zone's really close. They anticipate opening sometime in July. I think Cooper's is right around that same timeline as well. So those will be really nice amenities. And then building two of the residential of this, of Hogan Bay Town Center, received their permit this year, and they've started to go vertical as well. So additional residential on the north side of I-5 as well with Hogan Bay Town.
What would that be? There would be town, what, what kind of units?
Apartments, just regular, yeah, yep. Urban-style apartments. One of the buildings has some commercial on the bottom. I can't remember the square footage on the bottom.
Can you point, point out on the screen where those apartments are gonna go?
They are on, here. This is where the apartments will go.
I thought the hotel, hotels not gonna go on the bottom, right?
South.
Okay.
Yep, right here.
Okay.
So here's the Hogan Bay Hotels. And these are, you see the road, the apartments will be here. They'll back up here. So this is both hotels by Hilton True and a Homewood Suites. Homewood Suites has submitted a building permit. They've gotten their first review comments back from the building department, and we're just waiting for the resubmital on that as well.
So how many hotel units or rooms are we talking about altogether?
About two hundred, two hundred units.
So there's gonna be two separate hotels?
Two separate hotels, yep. So this, the site plan isn't great, but this right here is a hotel.
Okay.
Yeah. It looks really small and kind of out of scale with this one. But this hotel, I believe, is right around seventy-five units. This one is gonna be a little more than a hundred. And the Marriott Hotel at Britton Plaza will be around eighty units as well, or eighty rooms as well.
Did I miss, did you say what the status of Hogan Bay Hotels was?
We have one permit that's been submitted. They've received land use approval, and we have one permit in. They've received comments back from our building department, so we're just waiting for the resubmital to continue the review.
Are both, like, four stories, or?
Yep, yep.
Interesting.
See, we're gonna move down to Martin Way now, and this is a small commercial project, Martin Way Mixed Use.
Sarah, if I can, before I jump, just for you all, because I've been looking at the map that you put together, the secondary attachment that has the numbers, that also shows the parcel lines, too. So as we're kind of-
Thank you.
It's, you have to squint, because it's really small. But if you squint, you can see kind of the parcel lines. And so Martin Way Mixed Use is number twelve, just to get you caught up.
Yep, thank you.
Martin and?
Martin and Ho Street, not Ho Street, Lit Drive. This is Lit Drive, I believe. And it is a three-building, twelve thousand square foot spec commercial space. They've just submitted their design review up. So they received land use approval last year. They've just submitted their design review application in the last two weeks. And so that's another, you know, positive sign that they are planning on moving forward by submitting We'll move on to River Ridge Modernization. So this is a five-year project. They're in year two of their five-year modernization project. So they had some big improvements this year. They completed the common space, which includes their cafeteria, as well as gathering space for the students. And they've moved on to the main school room, or the school building with the classrooms and the lab space. And I think are on track to be complete in their five-year timeline. My daughter, who will be a senior when they complete at River Ridge, and she's really excited that hopefully she'll have a finished school by the time she graduates high school. Let's see. Next, we'll move on to a couple other single-family subdivisions that we also have in the pipeline. Morel, no, this is Monarch Meadows, and this is a D.R. Horton subdivision, just to the southwest of River Ridge High School on Ho Street. This is a one hundred and seventy-nine-unit single-family home subdivision that received its preliminary plat approval in twenty-twenty-four. They haven't started their site work yet, but D.R. Horton, who owns this project, or who will be building this project, also is building Morel Meadows. And this is the site of the mushroom farm, or the old mushroom, postrooms. So Silicon and Marvin Road. And this is, this is a hundred and seventy-nine units. Monarch is a hundred and thirty-three. Morel Meadows, they're installing streets, streetlights and utilities right now. So I would expect a final plat application sometime this year, getting some of those single-family home permits in, too.
On the Monarch Meadows, on Ho Street, it's planned for Ho Street to actually go all the way through. We've been planning-
Yeah.
Been planning for Ho Street to go all the way through. Will, will this project then allow?
There is a, there is, between Silicon and this project, there is private property in between those two. So I believe there's an easement, and I don't know if Scott remembers. And do you remember, then access on?
I know we're stubbing.
We've-
We are stubbing, okay.
Yeah. Rainier Vista Mobile Home Park is in between-
Yeah.
-Silicon and, and the Ho Street connection. So eventually, it will connect, but not at this time.
Right. That, that Mobile Home Park would have to redevelop. Whoops. And a new project for us that was just submitted, I think on April seventh, is the Young Child and Family Center. This is across the street from Morel Meadows at Niskuale Middle School. Again, it just submitted, was submitted by Hewitt Zollers for the North Thurston School District, and it's the application for the Young Child and Family Center. This is a fifty thousand square foot early learning center with library. I don't believe we have complete application for this yet, but once we do, this is one that's subject to that seventy-day time period. So hopefully, in the next couple of months, we'll have a land use application issued for this project as well. The Lodge PRD and Site Planner Review Approval. So this is a project, The Lodge and its adjacent kind of sister project, the Serenity Apartments to the north. This is by Hangers LLC, the local owner, local developer. Jeff Powell is building both of these projects. They're, they've received building permits for all their buildings, and I believe they're all vertical right now and finishing up their construction of this project as well.
We, I can, I never imagined that there was that much land back there as you see it, right? Because it was just, like, you couldn't, and then there's a big hole just in front of it. That's like, I remember as a kid, like, you know, if you fell in it, you'd be lost forever type of thing. So it's just so amazing that we'd fit anything right over there, yeah.
Yep. So there's ninety-four units in The Lodge, and I believe sixty-five in Serenity. So one hundred and fifty units there on those two parcels. We have additional multifamily projects that we're gonna look at as well. Carpenter Road Multifamily, this is a-
I did about-
-project-
Young Child and Family Center.
Next to the Ruland, or the Ruland, not Retirement Community.
Oh, yeah, that one.
And this is another one where on the street, it looks, yeah, it does also kind of drop off, yep.
Looks like a problem parcel.
It's a little, I think it's challenging to develop, because it does drop off really far. So it's gonna take some-
Fill.
It's got fill, yep. So it's gonna take some unique engineering, but they have been working through that process. They've got their entitlements. I think they've got their civil drawings in and have been reviewed, and they, there's some challenges in the market with pulling permits right now, and that's kind of what they're facing. They'd like to be able to get in and get, get their permits pulled before they expire this summer, because they will expire this summer as well.
So, so with this one, if, if you're, are they gonna get their own little turn lane and all that kind of stuff like they did on Britton Parkway, in terms of-
Carpenter?
Yeah, like, I don't know, is Carpenter gonna, is there, is there a plan to widen it, or is it, does it just stay the same? There's already, I think, a turn lane right there, is it? I don't remember.
I would look at Scott about the long-term plan. Yes, I would defer to Scott.
Yeah, three-lane section ultimately.
A three-lane section, yeah.
So for the, for the- And do they have to do those improvements as this goes in?
They'll do, they'll do their frontage improvements.
Because North Thurston Public Schools is on the other side.
So they'll have to do their, if there are any right-of-way dedications that they have to do, or they'll have to do sidewalk, plan or strip, any lane improvements associated with their project as well. I don't know what that requirement looks like for this project exactly, but they, they'd be responsible to make those improvements as well. The next project, bring back kind of an oldie but goodie, I guess, the Schneider Hicks Lake project. This is still, they are still planning to move forward. They have done some, they've done their tree removal. They've also put in their shoreline improvements, their shoreline mitigation improvements. So there's a nice, they've done a really nice job with their shoreline frontage there on the lake, and they are still planning to move forward with their multifamily project. I think this is also another, the, the challenges in the economy are, we're just kind of seeing that.
But still with the underground parking as it was designed?
As it was designed. We haven't had any requests for alterations to their site plan at this point.
And what about the other?
The other project has expired.
Expired?
Yep, yep.
So what does that do to their dock? Because wasn't it gonna be a joint, was this one, they have joint use? Wasn't there having some sort of joint use?
I don't know that the Gateway project had a dock. This one did, and it was allowed to, because it's a multifamily, so everybody can use this dock.
Right, because it was the north and the south building, and then those were the two that had the entitlement to the dock that they were, that they were designing and building, right? Yeah, I thought there was also some, they're gonna figure out some shared use. I don't know.
There are some properties in between the Schneider and the Gateway that, so they didn't share a common shoreline. Those, those projects didn't, there was some intervening ownership between those two projects, which wouldn't really lend itself, I think, to a shared dock. But that project, yes. Unfortunately, the Gateway project has expired. Close here. Another multifamily project that received land use approval. This is Intelco Multifamily. This is down in Corporate Center, Intelco Loop. This is two hundred, proposed as two hundred and forty units plus an amenity building. They do have land use approval, although they've, they've, there is some question about the design and whether, whether it will come in looking like this, or whether we have to revisit their site plan as well. There's been some change of ownership with these parcels as they've, as they've moved forward.
Wasn't there some, something also that had to be changed? Like, there was a C and R, where there's had to be some sort of vote that takes place?
So there's, so it's-
And then the city of Lacey is taking part, because we own-
Oh, as a property owner?
Yeah. And so, like, right?
We have to think about it.
We just abstain? Okay. I was curious how that was gonna happen. Like, who, who's making that decision?
Mayor.
Yeah?
I was owner of one of the parcels at that time, and I put a vote in for that, since have sold the property.
Okay.
But it's, it passed the board.
It did pass, okay.
Yeah, so that's a situation where it's permitted by use, city use, but prohibited by, multifamilies prohibited by the private covenants that are associated with the property. So those property- So those property owners need to work through that process to get a project like this to move forward.
And so all the, all the things that you've introduced so far, these are all market rate?
Yes, yes.
And then there's a senior center right there, right?
We have Manor Care.
There's, there's several retirement homes right there. There's Manor Care, there's, I can't remember the name of the other one. Bonaventure, I think they have two there.
This is not?
This is not senior living, no. This would be intended for families.
But we do have a childcare.
Yeah.
Yes, there is that as well. The Jacob Smith House, isn't that right? The White House or Jacob Smith House?
Jacob Smith House, right there.
And our new water tower.
And the new water tower, yep. Did you have a question?
I'm trying to remember the correct union. Yeah.
And this is our final slide, and this is the last building at Summer Walk Commercial. I think we talked about this one last time as well. It was not finished yet, it was just starting construction, but this is a new building. It's 6,000 square feet. It's got four tenant spaces. The end cap has beautiful plaza area, window, it is perfect setup for a restaurant. Right now, they don't have tenants. The tenant that intended to locate there pulled out at the last minute as they were finishing up. But our economic development coordinator has been actively reaching out to different restaurant users who could, who might potentially want to go into a space like this.
So there's none of the four spaces, at least?
No, they're all, yep.
Really, it was supposed to be Wild Wings?
Buffalo Wild Wings, yep, yep.
Can you point out where that's at on this?
Yes. It is right here. It's on the corner.
Next to Mod Pizza.
Yep, next to Mod Pizza.
Right next to Mod Pizza.
Yeah, so Mod Pizza has that really nice outdoor space. And this one will as well, and it'll really kind of complement that corner with pedestrian space and potentially outdoor dining space as well. It's a really nicely done building to kind of finish out the summer walk development there.
It's a lot of units.
On the other side.
Yes, yep. And that does it for our tour tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about some things you've seen around that maybe I failed to mention or questions about any of these projects, if you have them.
It's a lot of activity.
Yep, yep.
Do you have a question? Oh, yeah, I was, can you, can you go back to the Young Child and Family Center? I just wanted to, I didn't hear what their status was.
Oh, you want me to just tell you about it?
Yeah, please.
So it's 50,000 square feet of early childhood, early learning, as well as a library up in, at Niskewailey Middle School.
And what's their, their current status?
Their land use application has been submitted and is being reviewed for completeness. So once, we'll review it for completeness and then get it routed to parties, internal and external reviewers for comments, and then put those comments together and issue a land use decision on those. So it's about 70 days from the time they get complete application until, until we have to issue a land use decision. Typically, we issue them far earlier than 70 days, but.
In, in short, they just submitted.
Yes, sorry.
If I may, you know, those parcels sat empty for 20, 25 years. And because of the action of this council with the help of economic development, right? They, in seven short years, they're fully developed. And I mean, I think it was about seven years when we took action on that.
Summer Walk?
Yeah. Virgil was on the council then.
Probably, yeah, because it was the, yeah, that was a master plan in the original co-op plan. It was still just a master plan in 99, still had the GBW ownership there.
I think the total is six or seven buildings and like 10 businesses, I want to say.
Yeah, probably at least 10.
And that wouldn't normally be, you know, wouldn't have the employees, wouldn't have the, you know, all the benefits of local business.
We have, what, three hotels going in north of High Five? And I'm gathering the rack is part of their business case, but.
I would imagine.
Are they also thinking about relationship with what is coming with Creamwood Village or?
No.
I don't think so. The Residence Inn by Marriott, the one at Britton Plaza, there has been talk, there's been discussion about a hotel at that location for quite a long time, probably at least the last five to seven years. And then I think the new, I think the new owner at Hogan Bay Town Center, I think they were just building off the popularity of the rack, really.
Thank you.
To build on Councilmember Cox's earlier question, and I think I know the answer to this, but for all of the projects that we have in the pipeline, do any of them have affordable housing?
I don't think so. That's not to say we haven't had interest from some folks coming in. Studio 39, which is taking place in Woodlands or in Lacey Midtown, might have an affordable element. Again, if they, they can use the MFTE credit or opportunity to do some affordable housing. There've been some pre-sub's where they've also talked about getting some additional units and making them affordable as well. But we don't, none of the multifamily projects in the pipeline right now have committed to affordable housing.
And the multifamily tax exemption is currently only applicable to the Woodlands Square District and our commercial.
Neighborhood commercial.
Neighborhood commercial zones, because we just updated that definition, right?
Yep. We do have a party interested in the 41st and Marvin, part of the neighborhood commercial zone. They have, I believe, submitted a traffic scoping, and one of their, one of the things they needed was MFTE in order to move forward. And I think in neighborhood commercial, you have to do low income if you're going to take advantage of the MFTE credit. And so that project, as that moves forward, will be subject to that, or we'll have to put in some affordable units as well.
I look forward to that becoming tangible.
Yeah, yep.
And the word on the street, for what it's worth, is that the affordable housing market in terms of lending actually is stronger than the market rate market just because of the opportunities for tax incentives and public dollars. And so I wouldn't, we've had a number of inquiries, so we might see some things come to fruition. Obviously, time will tell, but hopefully.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience as well. PowerPoint.
So next up is our Human Services Grant Program update. Michelle.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Glad to be here tonight again. Michelle Chavez here for the update on the Human Services Grant Program. Just have a few slides to go through with you tonight. In your staff report, you had three attachments, the draft Human Services Grant Program policy, the draft Human Services 2025 application, and the draft 2025 Human Services Grant Program rubric. The council did budget again $300,000 for this program in the 2025 budget. We've been working with our Human Services Commission to get feedback on the program policies and, and update you all on kind of where they're at tonight. So I'm just going to go through a few slides. So again, we have a $300,000 allocation in our budget, which is similar to last year. The purpose is to increase the equity efficiency and predictability of human services funding for the city of Lacey and establish a comprehensive, reliable and accessible human services grant program. So we're continuing, we're hoping to continue the priorities that we had from 2024, which is the essential social services for low-income and special needs populations, and that would be services based around housing, survival and security. So in your packet, you have a draft timeline. I believe it's the last page of your staff report. And so we're hoping to go forward with this program recommendation. The Human Services didn't recommend, the Human Services Commission did not recommend a lot of changes to the policy or program other than to cap the public service award at $35,000 and allow only one application per agency because we had some folks last year that we weren't able to fund. And we got feedback from people who applied and feedback from commission and council that folks would like to make it so that more folks could be eligible for the program and get funded. So the idea was to limit the public service cap at $35,000 in order to allow more opportunities, keeping the capital applications at 50,000. And then the one minor change is instead of allowing for multiple applications, to have it be one application per agency.
Did anybody last year receive more than 35,000?
I believe the general allocation last year, the majority, we kind of made it a general amount. The average was 31,000 approximately.
Did anybody receive more than 35?
No.
And there was one agency that received two, I think, last year, right?
Yes, there was one agency that received two grants.
So I, I'll let you, I'll let you go through and I'll have some comment.
I believe this is close to the last slide, but the idea is to have this program start a little bit earlier than it did last year. So we are hoping to kick off the applications at the end of this month. And then having our workshop May 1st, then having the committee review the applications through May 30 through June 12th, and to do again that joint review with the council. So we had the commission met and all the applicants came in, and we had people present. And a couple councilmembers came, and we would like to open that up to you all again to come and allow you to participate in those discussions. So that would be hopefully June 5th. And then the idea is to kind of get the money out the door starting in August. And that was my last slide.
So I, last year, when you guys were having all these discussions, I happened to not be present during that time. And so this is sort of my first time going through this after all the decisions that were made last year. And a couple of things come, come to mind. And I understand where the council was at when we're dealing with 300,000. It's not a lot of money. And this sort of idea of, let's try to spread it around so everyone gets a little bit of something. I understand the appeal of that. And I just don't necessarily agree with it. I'm, I'm more of the mindset of like, what is the best impact? Collective impact that these dollars can make for people's lives in our community? And when you're spreading dollars around so thin, you know, it's pretty hard for these agencies to take just a little bit of dollars and, you know, are able to meet their, their missions. And right now specifically, there's so many people and so many different other nonprofits hurting. It's a really difficult time. And I, so I know a lot of difficult decisions are going to be made, need to be made. But the other thing that I, as I was going through this is, you know, this is our first year of the CBG dollars that we should know a status on here very quickly. And right now, as this is set up, the Human Service Commissions is going to go through this process and, you know, have to make some decisions. And then later in this year, they're going to have to meet again and do it for CBG. Now, I've got some clarification, there will need to be two separate applications because CBG has a little stiffer requirements than these dollars, which have obviously, there's no strings attached.
Only what we attach.
Yeah. However, when we're trying to think about collective impact, the ability to be able to match CBG dollars in some cases with these dollars, like, right? Now, now we're talking about really making a difference in our community. And this, and so that's where my head was going to when I was this. I was like, man, we are asking staff to go through a lot of work, we're asking agencies go a lot, through a lot of work, or asking Human Service Commissions go through a lot of work to, to give out $30,000, right? It, to me, it makes more sense that we match these dollars, hopefully with an application with the CBG dollars that you can really take a look at and say, okay, this will really make a difference. You know, this, this will have a bigger impact in our community. And so maybe it's too late to do it now since we're already sort of gone down this line. But I think it's, it's important that we start thinking about collective impact. We start thinking about how we're, these programs are actually affecting people and what is the best thing for the buck, and not just spreading money around so everyone feels a little happy, but they really can't do anything with it. You know, that doesn't make any sense to me at all, not when the need is so great in our, in our community. And so that, like I said, I wasn't a part of the big conversations that you had as a council, but that was in my sort of two cents. I'd rather see actually a higher cap and a couple really organizations be able to really do something with that, those dollars than just spread it around and no one can do really anything with it. But that's my two cents. Go ahead.
If I can, you know, when Virgil Clarkson, he came up earlier, he was on the council. He, the one thing he said to me when we sat down, he said, when, instead of making a big deal about, you know, relatively little things, if the majority of the council is leaning towards something, you should probably just go with it, show some harmony, right? And I think that's, you know, I agree with you 100%, and I'm usually more decisive when it comes to things like this. But when you, you know, we don't want to take extra time squabbling over $3,000 or $4,000 swinging left or, you know, this way or that way. So I think that's where I was sitting at personally.
Last year?
Yeah, but I agree, I think it would have twice the impact, you know, in your frame of mind, so.
It's just, yeah, Nick?
Yeah, I was going to say, I think the reasoning last year was, I don't think we really had like large ask, like on the scale that you're talking about. So I kind of agree that a cap doesn't necessarily make sense. I think it's just what we were presented with last year, it was the best option at the time. So I think that's at least a factor. So if we got rid of the cap, I wouldn't have much of an issue with it. I just think there were specific reasons last year.
I make a motion.
Yeah?
I would move that we approve the updated Human Services Grant Program Policy Application and Rubric.
There's a, there's a motion second to keep everything as is and this, under these guidelines. I'll have some more discussion on this. I, I understand when I come in here at the last second and say, hey, I, you know, this is my two cents when everything's laid out. I get it. I do think we need to think more strategically going forward, though. And instead of having two processes, we could have one process at this round at the same time. And I think we could hopefully bill a supplement these dollars with CBG dollars and make a bigger difference. It, it changes a lot when you, when you do it that way. I, I don't think there should be a cap. I think we should figure out what, the Human Services Commission should figure out what is the greatest need and put the dollars to the greatest need, in my opinion, but that's just.
Ken?
Michelle, how many, was it just the 15 that we had last year?
The 15 applicants, you mean?
Yeah, in my notes, I have 15.
There were 10 award, 10, 10 agencies awarded, 11 grants. And I just wanted to give an update on the CBG timeline, too. So we will be coming back to the council in May to talk about potential projects for CBG. As we talked about before, the programs are very, very different, and the requirements are very, very different. So for CBG, we have some pretty rigorous timelines that we have to meet in mid-July. In order to meet those timelines, I don't know that it would be possible to run the two programs concurrently this year because there is a lot of administrative burden on us getting this up and running. And we are going to suggest some capital projects to start just because the administrative lift for community development block grant is so heavy for the federal dollars. And this program, this general fund grant program, the administrative. program, this general fund grant program, the administrative lift is a lot easier and it's a lot more flexible for our applicants. And I just wanted to reiterate that we did have some very large asks last year for capital projects, the whole pot, basically, a couple agencies asked for the whole pot. So, we, that cap, the fifty thousand, if one agency were to take the whole amount, then that would be one project funded instead of ten or eleven. So, I just wanted to make that comment.
That's, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Well, a couple of things. So, one, I think going for, I think this year it's too late to try to do them together, but I agree with you that we should try to do those, these two programs concurrently because I do think it's going to be the same, same organizations, the same groups that are going, that need help, we're going to be funding from both. So, I think doing them together probably in the big picture will lessen the workload actually on the commission and on staff. So, I agree with you there. As far as the cap, I'm not a huge fan of the cap. I'm okay with removing the cap because I would like to see the dollars go, although I would have, I, I'm not sure that I like them going into the capital, all of the going capital. I kind of think the money should really be focused more on the service side than the capital side, particularly with this, because it is such a small amount of money. I mean, three hundred thousand, if we're really going to fund any capital projects, you're talking about maybe, you know, one, right? Because you can't fund multiple capital projects with three hundred thousand. I would just assume remove capital projects altogether, but all the money towards the service side and then, and remove the limit. That would be my long-term preference. For this year, I think it's too late to make those kinds of major changes because you've already done so much of the work, but I think we should be looking at that for the future for sure.
And I would like to make a comment if I could.
Please.
Regarding that, the CBG dollars, the majority of those have to be spent on capital. Only fifteen percent can be spent on public services. And when I was researching, developing the program for Lacey, what I saw is there were several jurisdictions that had that, that the general fund was only for service projects and then CBG only capital in order to balance that out.
Yeah. See, and I like that idea.
And see, that makes the most sense to me too, right? It's like, look at CBG, was that gonna handle, and then where's the gaps and can we fill that gap with our general fund dollars? It just makes the most sense. Now, I get it, we're, this is our, only our second year of doing this, it'll be our first year of CBG, we need to get it up and going and see how it goes, but.
But for the future, I think we need to be looking at the bigger picture.
I do agree though, like, including capital projects and this, no one can do anything with even a fifty thousand dollar cap. What are you gonna do with fifty thousand dollars? I mean, you can't do anything with fifty thousand dollars. And so.
We did have one capital project.
What, can you remind me?
It was Holmes First.
They put their dollars in with other dollars?
Yeah.
Yeah, combined, it wasn't, it didn't fund the project on its own.
No, no. So, but that will be able to, we'll be able, we'll be able to backfill that with CBG dollars. That's why it's so important when you're looking at them at the same time.
But I think there's a challenge for organizations that have projects that it may be administratively very burdensome for them to get the CBG dollars and like this program can be used for projects that don't meet those thresholds or if they don't have the administrative muscle to meet the compliance requirements for CBG, right? Because that federal compliance piece is hard for some smaller organizations. So, I don't think we can assume that every project is going to be able to pair up these two different colors of money because some of them, like this is a better source of money because it's more flexible, there are fewer strings attached. Some organizations, they might have the ability to be, you know, scoop some of this and scoop some CBG and have a good pool, but I wouldn't want to limit it to just projects that meet the criteria for both because that lifts the threshold for these dollars.
Oh, yeah, I would think that we would want to use the CBG requirements for this money because, because if you look at the ones that were funded last year, and I don't remember who they were, but they were, some of them, I mean, I was here, Malcolm and I were here for when they did their presentations, some of these were definitely organizations that would not be able to do CBG funds. I mean, there's no way they had the capacity to put that together, some of them.
But you still get a better picture, overall picture.
Yeah, the whole thing is doing it together.
If you're doing it around the same time. I know there are two different buckets and one's a lot of different requirements, so on and so forth. And then we'll, we're going to, you know, learn as CBG comes to us next month, you know, there's, there's places where it's a lot easier to spend that money, there's places where it's a lot harder to spend that money and we're going to have to make some decisions early on as it was pointed out, what do we do to try and get this off the ground early on because it is a heavy lift to take on a major program like this. And so, there'll be some more talks about this, but.
I appreciate what you're saying there. I also worry too that from early things that we're seeing right now, that it's going to be even harder to comply with these federal regulations. You know, there's going to be, at the front end, application, funding applications are going to be scrutinized for a longer period, which gives a shorter time horizon and it's going to be a mess for a while. So, I really, I think we ought to go with what Michelle and the committee have pulled together for us so far and then, you know, look to the future about how we can make improvements, but let's, you know, let's be realistic about what's going on, you know, at the federal level and see what comes in the door this time and go from there.
So, so, yeah, I still, I'm still of the opinion, if we're going to put the cap, it's almost to be, I'd rather see more of these dollars go toward service than.
So, I, I don't, I like the, I like the fifty thousand dollar cap on capital and the reason why is because if you're doing capital and it's going to take obviously a whole lot more than fifty thousand dollars, but there are some things that you may not, the incidental things that come into capital that you, maybe you don't want, you have to paper trail it forever just to get it done. I don't like the thirty-five thousand dollar cap on the service part, even though we know that nobody got more than thirty-five thousand dollars last year, right? But maybe there is somebody who's worthy of more than thirty-five thousand dollars and I don't want to cap them.
It wasn't that they didn't ask for more, it's that we didn't give anyone more. There were asks for more than that.
But we were spread kind of thin. And so, in capital, if we gave fifty to, you know, six of them, we're done, right? There's not enough to go around. But if you're doing capital projects and you know that fifty thousand dollars isn't really going to get you that far, you need half a million dollars, well, you're not going to get it all from us, or you need two hundred thousand dollars, you're not going to get it all from us, but you can get fifty and take care of some of your incidental stuff. But I don't really agree with the thirty-five because there are some agencies out there who really do good work and thirty-five, if we could see our way to giving them more than thirty-five, we would.
We're going to be making the final decision on July fifteenth, right? So, why hang, right?
No, this is to, this is to have it go forward absolutely as is.
Still, it doesn't make any sense to me to handcuff ourselves, you know what I'm saying? It's, if something makes sense to spend more money and push.
Can we, is there some consensus agreeing the cap is at fifty thousand either for service or for?
We do have a motion.
I know, there's, I know, I'm trying to see where, there is a motion.
We're continuing to discuss the motion. I did just want to kind of resurface that, I feel like we like talking about this because we all really care, right? We really care about making sure we're using money effectively in service to organizations in the community. And I remember we had a ton of discussion about this last year and the year before. And one of the reasons we created a commission to give us recommendations was because we ended up talking about it so much that we thought it might make sense to have a body devoted to focusing on this and providing recommendations. And I just wanted us to recall that what they have come up with and deliberated and recommended is what we have in front of us. So, this wasn't out of the blue, right? This was recommended from that commission that developed this.
But wasn't, isn't the commission going off of the council's leaning that there was a cap at thirty-five thousand on this? I mean, they are, they were following the council's lead, weren't they? Or did they come up with that number all on their own?
So, we had the work group set up originally and the work group worked with staff to come up with the original parameters. And what we saw through the first application process is that there were some things that were, there were some asks that were just very large and they decided to kind of come back with a different recommendation with this, kind of make this smaller cap for the public service. But the original idea was the commission in collaboration with staff recommendation. Then we brought that to council, council had a long discussion about it and they said it was okay for that first year.
Yeah, they weren't, it wasn't, they brought it to us, we didn't give it to them, as I recall.
Well, there is a motion on the floor.
Well, we, yeah, but finish it. I mean, if we want to raise it to fifty on both, I mean, it's not that difficult, right? You vote down the motion, you make another motion.
There'd need to be another motion.
Maybe a bad analogy is like the same road, but you go from forty-five to thirty-five to twenty-five back up to thirty-five, back up to forty-five, instead of just having it be thirty-five.
Talking about March, right?
Yeah, you know, like, you know, Murray and back in the day, fifty and now it's what, forty now or something, thirty-five. It's confusing, it should all be simple. It's not that big a money that, you know, it's, you know.
Is there, is there, is there, is there a motion to raise the?
Well, you can't put another motion. We have to vote on the motion.
Let's vote on the motion that's on the floor.
The way this needs to go is there needs to be a motion that goes on at first and then the original.
Is that it? I thought you voted on one motion and then make another.
Well, then you vote on both, right?
Yeah.
Unless the first one passes.
But.
Sort of.
It's kind of where we were last year.
I think I would entertain an offer to amend the motion.
If it wants to change, you need to change it. A motion is second to change it.
Can we amend the motion?
Yeah, can we amend the motion?
But the original motion is.
Second and I think it needs to be acted upon.
The way I thought it works in Roberts, I think you're, I don't think you're, well, we don't have our, we don't have Dave here, but I thought we vote on that motion, if it were to be voted down, someone could then make a motion to do the fifty thousand limit on both. That's my understanding, that's I'm pretty sure.
Can you guys agree to fifty on both?
The Roberts rules is if there's a motion in second, then you go on that motion and if that fails or passed, then you go to the first one, for the first motion. So. Robert?
Would benefit from some clarification.
Sure.
So, as I understand it, and things are moving kind of fast, the motion that's been seconded is to maintain the program as.
As is.
Present as it is. Proposed, not to do any updates.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
I don't believe that's correct, I'm sorry. I believe the motion was to.
Adopt.
Adopt the staff recommendation.
Yes.
That's why, that is exactly why I'm asking.
Yes.
Because I heard it's something a little different.
Yeah.
So, perhaps the member could clarify.
Sure. So, my motion was to approve the updated Human Services Grant Program Policy Application and Rubric.
And that was seconded.
So, that's basically following the staff recommendation.
Correct.
And if you want to.
It's going to be friendly, you have a motion to second to do amendment right now.
Regarding caps and so forth, you put, someone could move to amend that.
Yes.
Yes.
If there's a move to amend.
Right, that's.
And a second, then we discuss about that, then we do, sign that, then we sign the first amendment. Is there a motion to amend?
I'd motion to amend to make both limits fifty thousand.
Oh, it's second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on that?
I think we've discussed, but I, the fifty, so, because these dollars have very little strings attached, which is really great, I think they can be a big help to come alongside bigger dollars, right? And so, that's the capital portion. But on the services side, I saw some services who could use a whole lot more than thirty-five thousand dollars and use it really effectively, right? But we did kind of have our ninety percent rubric score rule that kind of, kind of got thrown into place and that prevented us from, from, from some of the action that we might have wanted to take. And then there was four or five of them who just didn't get anything, right? So, that's why I'm thinking, you know, fifty and fifty is a good place for us to be in this cycle, but in subsequent cycles, I just have a strong feeling we're going to, we're going to change that.
So, you need more discussion?
The only thing I would add is, no matter how we do it, no matter what limits we put, there are going to be really good organizations who do great work in our community that we're not going to be able to find. It's going to happen with this, it's going to happen with CBG because it does every time and it did last year. I mean, there were organizations, I mean, there was no, no one that applied wasn't worthy of getting the money. They all do good work in our community, but we only have what we have, right? We can't, we can't fund everything.
This is a sad reality.
So, there's a motion to amend the original motion to raise the cap so that.
You vote on the amendment first, right?
Yeah, amendment first, that the cap be for fifty thousand dollars for capital and fifty thousand dollars for service. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed?
No.
The motion passes. Now, there's the original motion to approve the whole thing as presented, but with a fifty thousand cap as we just raised. So, now the motion.
So, we're voting on the amended motion.
Yeah, we voted on the amended motion.
The original motion with the amendment, okay.
Any more discussion?
Pass.
And all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is anyone opposed? That motion unanimously carries.
Are we sure procedurally that we did that correctly?
We did do that correctly.
Very good.
If not, we'll hear about it later.
If after all these years, I don't know Roberts rules, then I'm in, I'm in trouble. Okay, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is our communications plan update.
Hello, everyone. All right. Well, our presentation requires no motions. It's informative only. We're going to be talking about the communications plan today and we have a full communications team here. John is here, but Will be here, he's actually in the booth right now, but Will be here towards the end of the presentation. Yeah, no. There we are, okay. So, the communications plan has a specific line item to provide an annual report on the communications plan. So, that's why we are here today and I'll try not to do all of the talking here. I'll leave most of the presentation to the team here, Donna, Jenny, John, who will be showing up soon, and our communications intern Peyton. And we'll also have Veronica do a segment here as part of our equity and inclusion items. So, the communications plan has twenty-four different line items in addition to some other goals and objectives. And don't worry, we're not going to go into all twenty-four items in this presentation, but we will be hitting the highlights and many of these items are grouped together with other similar targeted items and so, we'll still be covering a lot of things. Now, with that, the comms plan does have three key goals. One is to augment internal communications to increase cross-departmental collaboration and awareness. Two is to continuously evaluate and enhance external communications to provide transparent, timely and accessible information to community stakeholders. And three, to proactively craft communications and establish a defined Lacey brand. So, while that is three goals, it's actually a lot of items within those three goals and we'll go over how we do each one of those things. And I'll start things off by talking about the Intranet. And in the comms plan, there is a line item, several line items that pertain to developing and implementing an organization-wide Intranet. That system will leverage some of the tools that we don't currently use and help to better our internal communications. So, that also includes some document management aspects as well. So, this is a screenshot of the Intranet that we have in place now and that's designed as a place where every city employee can find the most important things that they need all in one spot. And really, it's a portal where employees can get to things quickly, whether that's their timesheet or city policies or document templates and other things and they can reach that in just a couple of clicks. So, the Intranet also features some important internal announcements, news, other things. So, it's a place where city employees can go. Right now, the city manager also has a page on the Intranet, as does communications and HR and information services and the city clerk. And soon we'll have some pages for finance and the city attorney as well. So, again, this is all in. So again, this is all internal and makes it easy for, uh, people to find the information that they need. Uh, with that, each department, uh, has their, their page with common resources for staff, including their contact information if you need to get ahold of anybody. Different news updates and, and some other things. And the Intranet's really a place where we can store files so anyone can access them. And we're moving all of our, uh, templates over to the Intranet too. So there's no issue with outdated versions of things that are being used and sent out or, uh, you know, people hunting for things on a server or anything like that. Um, I do have to say that the real credit for the Intranet goes to Kelly Adams, who led this project and, and the design work on it as well. So we'll be carrying on that work and getting other departments well-established on the Intranet as we roll forward. And if, um, there are no questions on the Intranet, I'll turn it over to Jenny for Lacy Works.
Pass the baton.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, council, mayor, deputy mayor. Um, we are excited to just highlight some of our things that we've been working on over this last year. Uh, Lacy Works is our community request management system that you were briefed on last year with our comms update. Again, Kelly Adams did the heavy lifting on getting this created. But we have been, uh, we just hit our one-year anniversary. So it launched on March eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. So we just hit our one-year mark and it's been such a great resource for us already. So here we just highlighted again that this is part of our, our work plan, um, to, to create a comprehensive, uh, three-one-one system for internal and external use. So as a reminder, Lacy Works collects details of the requests that come in, uh, from our community, stores the issues in the system, sends a request or confirmation and routes the request to the group responsible for resolution. And this all happens automatically, which is so wonderful. So during service of a request, staff can enter notes in the backend of it. They can view history of requests, notify the submitter of progress, reroute to other staff and a lot of other things. Again, Kelly did such a great job getting all of this set up on the backend, so it's made our, our job a lot easier now. This is just a screenshot, just to show you of what it looks like. So over on the right where it says created, this was a request that came in from a customer. I liked this one because it actually gave us a little kudos and highlighted our public works, um, staff for their timely response in the community, which they do. They do an awesome job. And this was just reporting that a street sign, um, was bent and broken. And so you'll see underneath, our staff went out and assessed it and determined the pole was sturdy and good condition, straightened it, replaced bolts, and they closed out the request. And so the customer then received those notes and knew that it was addressed, um, and that it was closed out on our end. So it just shows the history over there on the right, or sorry, on the left side. So if maybe a month from now, somebody else emails or submits a request, we can be like, I think that we just had something like that. And we can go back and see what was done and who responded, uh, which is just helpful in trying to find out what the history is of these requests.
And in this case, the customer is whoever called it in.
Correct. Or who submitted it online. Uh, so just a few slides with some statistics. You can see, uh, this is over the first year. The most submitted request categories, utility billing, one for this one. But it might be just a little skewed for year one, just because we had some staff members entering in requests as calls were coming in for utility billing. They were unable to get through. We determined that that would be a good place to kind of enter that in, so then it was just routed right to them. So we might see next year, utility billing might not be our number one. But these are the, just the top five, um, for the first year for the different categories. We have a whole lot of categories though. This is a look month to month. The orange is closed and the blue is open. So this is really just to highlight that these responses are getting addressed in a timely manner. So we want to see those two lines pretty close. And every once in a while, we'll have some requests that need to remain open or put on hold as we do a little bit more research or, um, maybe just a timing issue. Uh, but for the most part, uh, we are getting responses out, uh, really quickly.
Are there any, um, you want questions at the end?
I'm, I'm sorry?
You want questions at the end?
No, during, it's just fine.
Okay. So are there any, um, requests that take priority over other requests? Maybe things that have to be done within a certain time period because of the nature of the request?
Yeah, and there is a way that you can, um, I, on the backend, we can establish the priority level, so one, two or three. And then that, um, will highlight to the staff person that needs to address it.
I see it on the bottom there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, did you see it there?
On, uh, your example of the sign, yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Yes, priority. So we can adjust that, uh, if it comes in, we're like, oh, this needs to be, uh, addressed right away, then we can make that a, of one priority. Um, and then this is just looking at a, a snapshot for the year. We had six hundred and twenty-five opened and six hundred and nineteen closed. Again, a few are going to remain open and on, on hold. Some are code enforcement, which as you guys know, take months and months to, um, close out and, and see resolution. And so those remaining are, I'm assuming probably some that are on hold for, for a little while. And then total requests by department, public works was by far the leader. But they just have the most categories. Uh, this includes all things streets, so potholes, streetlights. I mean, anything and everything, uh, water concerns, um, they are by, they're, they keep busy for sure. Um, and then finance, you know, it has utilities looped in there, so this was kind of a full year for them with some utility billing, um, uh, challenges. And then please, communications, those are actually, um, there is a category that is labeled other and those come to me and our department. Oftentimes they can just be rerouted, um, maybe the user didn't really know what it fell, falls under, but there is, um, a category, you know, a staff person that I am aware of that can address those. So then I just re-categorize those and it gets sent off to them. Are there any other questions for Lacy Works? It's been a great first year and, um, yeah, we'll just keep fine-tuning it as time goes and, yeah.
Very cool. And thank you.
Yeah.
Kelly Adams for doing all that.
Yes, exactly. Um, and then I'm just going to, I know we just talked about the Lacy Community Academy, but we wanted to highlight this because it is going to be something that we'll continue to look at in future years for communication and outreach with our, um, with our community and, you know, creating those partnerships, stakeholders for, for Lacy. So, um, I wanted to just share some of the feedback. I sent out a, a survey to our attendees and so they had some really great things to say, some great suggestions on how we can maybe, um, change it a little bit next year. Format it a little differently. Um, so it was really great feedback and appreciated, but we had some really, uh, really great comments. And there we are from last week.
I'll ask you the same question I asked, uh, people when I was going around.
Yeah.
What's the, the thing that you, what's the biggest thing that you learned going through this process? And what's the, you know, what's the one thing that we can improve upon? What's the biggest change you think will, needs to be made for next year?
Questions. Well, I honestly learned a lot. I mean, I attended every week and I've worked here for sixteen years and there was still information to learn and still, um, things to take away from it. So as the city grows and, uh, looks different, there, we're going to continuously have different services and different needs. And so it was, um, they asked a lot of great questions, so I really just appreciated hearing from them, um, what they were interested in and what their concerns were. And I think it's a testament to how great our city council and our staff are. They feel, they feel very confident in our leadership, so, um, that was a great takeaway as well. And.
Yeah, what's, uh, so for next year.
Yeah.
What, what's one thing that you think you would change?
Longer sessions. Um, you know, going into it, we were like, gosh, an hour and a half to fill, that's, that's going to be a lot of time. But by the time you get in there and.
People get settled.
Oh, yeah, yeah. By the time you get settled and really each department did such a great job of finding creative ways to engage and get the information across. We did some tours, um, and that just all took up so much time. So after about the first or second session, I kind of approached everybody. I was like, hey, is it, is this going to be a hardship for anybody if we go to like eight o'clock, you know, regularly? So we would definitely look at kind of the structure of, of the nights. Yeah, they gave some, some insightful feedback for just content and, um.
And are you thinking you're going to do it at the, sort of the same time next year? Is this going to be a, an annual thing? Is it going to be a bi-annual thing or?
We'll see. Um, I might, I wouldn't, I would like to maybe push it back a month or two. Just to allow, it was really nice when like daylight savings hit and it was a little lighter, um, especially for some of the tours driving out to like the water treatment facility when it was pitch black. And you're hoping to hit maybe some nicer weather for like our tour of Woodland Creek Park. And, um, I mean, we lucked out with like a break in the rain, but it was like hailing an hour before. So maybe push it back a, a month or two, but, you know, I don't want to get too far into like budget season and, and just being aware of each department's load. Making sure that we have those discussions too, like would this timeframe be good for you?
Thank you.
I, I just wanted to point out the picture and, and say that's kind of a snapshot of our city, all different walks of life. You know what I mean? That thing's pretty cool.
Yeah.
But I want to go back to the service requests in.
Oh.
You know, six hundred and twenty-five and nineteen were closed. That, I think the people, whether you come out and say it or not, they are feeling heard. And I think that's very important. Their, their voice matters, you know what I mean? Even if it's something as little as their street light that, you know, was out and the light bulb got changed or something like that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's.
And there's a lot of just those simple ones.
Little things like that matter when, you know? So that's what I want to share.
Also, I, I want to say it was a really cool cross-section of people who took part of it. I wasn't quite sure.
It was.
Who was going to, you know, but when you got them, they were all different walks of life, different, you know.
But isn't that what we're trying to achieve?
Oh, yeah.
Getting our whole community involved in the city?
Yeah, absolutely.
And you look at that and, and that screams to me, the whole community, not just, you know, one demographic or, you know.
I sat with a few of them and talked to them. Some of them had just moved here within the last two years. Some of them had been, had been here for, Nancy had been here for twenty-seven years.
Right.
Uh, and so on. Um, I was, I was wondering if, if, I think you had six modules?
Yes.
Okay, is there, is, would, is there a, a module you would add or a module that you would remove?
Um, yeah, I think, you know, in speaking with Rick and Shannon a little bit too about the program, um, I would love to have a, really a week with you all, with our council and make that a more robust program instead of just kind of an informal thing. So maybe ending the session with that and then, you know, they've been through six weeks of learning about the city and it might be a good opportunity for them to actually have, spend more time with you all and ask questions, thoughtful questions that they've had a chance to, to formulate, so. More to come.
Yeah, council night.
Yeah.
They can come to our four-thirty. It's no PM, right?
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to send it back down to Ty.
The feedback I got on the Community Academy was also really good. We interviewed some of the folks at the last, uh, session and, um, the comments were, this is such a great program. It really got people interested in being a part of advisory boards, which is really good to see. And, um, somebody also said that, um, they were so surprised and happy that the people that work for the city really seemed to genuinely care about the work and are very knowledgeable and just very positive all along.
Were these individuals of, um, aware and had the stipend available to them?
Did they have the what?
Stipend.
Stipend.
Not this go-around.
Okay.
They weren't, they weren't in advisory committee.
Yeah, I know.
We, we did have that discussion, but ultimately landed in not moving forward with that.
Got it.
Okay, let's talk about email notifications. So the goal here is to, uh, leverage, uh, email text and other technologies so people can opt into the information that they want to receive from the city and make it all available in one location, which we do have a location like that. It's central email signup space on our website, which you can reach really easily. Just click on the alerts button on the main page and it'll take you straight here. Uh, each one of these buttons takes you to a group of all the email lists that you can sign up for under that category. So if there's a particular, uh, public works project and you really want to know the progress on that, then you can go to the page, click on the public works projects, find the, um, particular one that you want information on and subscribe to that. You can get that delivered straight to you. Uh, one tool I want to highlight here is the, um, new, new outreach tool we've got, which is a, a new weekly newsletter called Lacy Weekly. And we started this last fall and really it's a great tool for sending out the latest in what's happening, uh, plus what's coming up in the immediate future. So everyone here is familiar with Lacy Life and, um, that publication is, comes out once a month. So it kind of requires a lot to be mapped out, uh, one month ahead of time because you have to get it printed and you have to go through a lot of process with that. The weekly provides the opportunity to showcase a lot of content that we can't put into Lacy Life. So we can highlight job postings, we can highlight, uh, upcoming meetings, uh, the results of city council meetings, things like that. And, um, it's really a, a fun tool and it's been quite popular too. We all have almost four hundred subscribers on Lacy Weekly and it's only been around for about six months or so. So I imagine that's going to grow and overtake, uh, a lot of other, other newsletters soon too. That's it for that. Any questions on, on that one?
How are you getting word out about this so that people know? I mean, you have four hundred, that's a good start. What are you doing to get more people on there?
Yeah, we cross-leverage all of our tools. So we promote Lacy Life and Lacy Weekly and Lacy Weekly and Lacy Life. Uh, we also pump things out on social media and use all of our other choo, tools to promote all of our other tools. So builds on itself that way. All right.
You did it? Is that what you're saying? Oh, good job. Well, thanks, Ty. So now we're moving on to our branding and style guide and I know we brought this to you, um, in previous presentations, just briefly. We are in a draft for it still and we will be bringing that to you in the next few months, so. Again, this relates to one of our goals in the communications plan. And I just want to kind of start off just by saying like, why do we need one? And how it's a really, it's a really important and valuable tool for the city to have. And so just a few reasons why that we really need one is it will establish a professional identity. And that will, um, if people look at us and think of us a professional and organized entity, it will help us, you know, improve our identity and also even like stuff from like people wanting to work here or community engagement and grant funding and things. It looks professional and people, um, trust it. And going on with that, um, it does build stronger public recognition and it does build trust because people will repeatedly see the same things, just like, you know, you know Coca-Cola or Nike or whatever, you repeatedly see them. You, um, trust the brand and it will also build familiarity and, um, trust in our local government. Next one is that clear unified messaging, which will, um, our branding guide will include information about tone and voice and how we write so that people, um, it will align with what we want people to think about us. We're friendly or are we being formal? Are we being inclusive, that type of thing? And most importantly with the, um, clear unified messaging, we want to make sure that things are written in plain language so people can easily and clearly understand what we're trying to communicate. So that'll be part of our brand guide that we make sure that people are writing that way. And also it'll be consistent across all our communications so that, um, everybody will be using the same fonts, the same logos, the same colors and everything, no matter if it's public works, communications, whatever. And it'll build a strong and recognizable city identity so everybody knows it's legitimately us. I like to, um, think that it will be, um, helpful for staff too because right now we have people come up with their own brand, so to speak, when they're creating, um, documents. And then they have to think about what colors am I using, what fonts am I using? But if they have it all established in one guide, then everybody just uses the same and it will be actually a lot easier. Sometimes I think people think we're trying to tie their hands, but actually it'll be, I think it will make their jobs easier. And one thing that's not on here, but it will also help, um, potentially attract businesses, visitors or new residents because it, they will know our brand and, you know, recognize it, so that will be helpful. So what will we include in it? We'll include the logo, of course. We all know there's been several iterations of our logo over the last several years, sometimes used simultaneously. But this will, um, say which logos are acceptable and will, which formats will have different ones, black and white, horizontal, things like that. It'll also tell us how much space to keep around it, not squish it, not alter it in any way, those types of things. We'll also include the colors. The primary colors will obviously be our logo colors, our four logo colors. And we will incorporate some secondary colors that just kind of add a little flavor and supplement, um, some of the colors we have that will be used sparingly in, in our materials. Another one is fonts, and I think this is a really important part of our branding because we want to make sure that the fonts are easy to read and accessible to people. because we want to make sure that the fonts are easy to read and accessible to people with diverse visible, visual abilities, excuse me. And it will also reflect the tone and style of what we want to convey. Another one is image standards, which this will include not only the resolution and formatting that we would use, it's best, but it will also feature the best parts of Lacy, like our parks, fun things to do, but most importantly, our people. So we want to make sure that we're highlighting fun, friendly, you know, people and stay away from stock photos as much as possible and no AI. And then the other ones are just our video standards will be outlined, will have some graphic standards and some other materials which might include like maps and things like that. So in conclusion, that's just kind of, it'll be a nice comprehensive resource for all of our staff to make everything look uniform and be presented in a similar fashion, so. Do you guys have any questions or we'll be coming to you shortly with that, so. Great. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so this is one of my favorite things to talk about is media relations. In our plan, we've got one action that centers on ensuring that we are speaking in a unified voice and that we're being proactive in the communications that we're putting out. We're, we need policies in place and processes in place and, and we have the comms team that's here to help every department. And so how do we, how do we do some of that stuff? And the way we do that is through consistency and through organization. And we are and have been organizing our communications tools so that we have a collection of information at our fingertips at all times. And so that will help set up staff for success when situations arise. So what we did, so we started setting up some templates for talking points and communications plans and presentations and other documents that we use regularly or should use regularly. So when issues come up, we can have something available where staff can talk from them. So those talking points are then put into an easily accessible place where staff can reach them. That would be the intranet, which we talked about earlier. And that database is accessible for any of the staff. And so when questions come up about the summer watering schedule or our flag policy or something like that, we already have talking points there that people can pull from and draw from. And there are answers available. So we've been creating all of these different items here for the ease of staff and our public vision going forward. Now I want to draw some special attention to communication plans in particular. So our presentation here today is about the city communication plan, our goals for the next several years and how we'll execute things. However, we do create smaller communication plans for various topics that come up. And these comms plans are very important because they help everybody get on the same page. And we want our staff to be prepared ahead of time and a good comms plan will really help with that. So comms plans come with a background, a little bit of information on what we're talking about. They go into who are the audiences that we're trying to communicate with and then a few key messages. So if there's nothing else you're going to get across, at least get these key messages across. There's a schedule of how we're going to communicate. So when are we sending out information? What are we sending out? Press release, social media and who's doing that work? Contact information for who's in charge and some talking points to help to support those key messages. So we have a lot of different things that we speak to, whether it's a crisis that's coming up right away or something that we can prepare for. Maybe there's an event happening. We put together comms plans to help staff feel prepared for all of these things. And those are important because we are all speaking from the same document when that happens. So no matter who I'm talking to with the city, I am getting the same message from this person and this person and this person. We have consistent messaging because everybody knows what we're going to say about that thing. Very important. So this example here is about the museum move. This is from quite some time ago. But you can see how we have the background, the audiences we're communicating with, key messages, the schedule that we're releasing information, talking points that's helped to support our key messages and everything going forward. And these do change over time, so this is from quite some time ago, like I said. Now, another thing about media and messaging, we do a lot of other work here in the comms team. We handle media inquiries, we keep an eye on what's going on in the press, we handle public inquiries as Jen and Jenny's been talking about. I'll talk a little bit about that. We track media inquiries. We've had eleven media, twelve media inquiries this year. And the majority of those, as you might imagine, come from the Olympian. And these inquiries range from police activity to community planning, everything that comes up in the press that comes to us and we handle those inquiries. For the most part, I act as the point person for those when they come into the city and the police department handles a lot of those things pertaining to their work and their investigations due to the uniqueness of that nature of that work. We monitor media stories about Lacy. Donna sends out those news alerts with the stories that come out about Lacy or stories that affect Lacy. We also take and route inquiries from the public as they come to us. As Jenny mentioned, they just come through Lacy Works, but they also show up through email or telephone as well. And the comms team does a lot of work partnering with local organizations too. So we help with things like, you know, the Spring Fun Fair and a lot of other local groups that put on different celebrations and things or events. We partner with other governments for major news announcements or other events like that too, like the FBI press conference we did a couple of weeks ago. We were involved in that. One thing that's not on the slide that I didn't want to add in here too though is that we also do council support. So John runs all the meetings and the streaming and all of that stuff for council meetings and work sessions, but also for other meetings here in this room. And he'll speak a little bit about that in a little bit. But we also handle speeches and other communications too. And so we will write comments for city manager or for the mayor, for deputy mayor, for anybody else if there's something that's coming up that we need to speak, you know. So a lot of different things come out of the comms team here. I'll hand things over to our intern Peyton to talk about social media.
First of all, I just want.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any questions before I hand things over? Okay, go ahead, Peyton.
Okay, I just wanted to briefly introduce myself since it's my first time in front of you all. I'm Peyton. I'm a student at St. Martin's and I am the communications intern and I have been doing that since December. I mainly work on web posts, Lacy Weekly and then social media, which is actually what I'm going to be talking about today. So without further ado. So social media is how we connect with our community members and these are our channels that we use to do that. Facebook currently has around sixteen thousand two hundred and fifty followers. X has around five thousand two hundred and sixty. YouTube has around three thousand five hundred. Instagram has around three thousand four hundred and sixty and LinkedIn has around one thousand five hundred and sixty. Something that we've aimed to do with LinkedIn, just to highlight that one really quick, is to use it for more than just job postings. We wanted to really show what it's like to work at the city and how great it is to work here. So we highlight wellness events and different recognitions that employees are receiving and just a lot of things going on with employees and things around City Hall and everything. So that has been something that we've really wanted to focus on and LinkedIn has actually grown significantly in the short time that we've been using it. So then here is a visual of just what our social media followers are looking like and how those have evolved within the lifetime of each platform. And I just wanted to show that so you can kind of see how long each one's been around as well as how many followers we're at this point. And as you can see on the graph, Facebook is our most popular platform. So I wanted to do a little bit of a deeper dive into that. Bear with me because I have some numbers coming. So from April twenty twenty-four to April twenty twenty-five, our followers have increased by about fourteen percent. Our reach has increased by about thirty-six percent. Our interactions have increased by about five percent. Link clicks by about twenty-five percent, visits by about thirteen percent and net follows by about forty-five percent. So all of those metrics are trending upwards, which is really good. And it just shows that we're getting more community involvement on our most popular platform, which is what we're aiming to do.
Those profit margins would be really good.
Oh, yeah.
And then another thing I wanted to do to just zoom in a little bit further is to look at the metrics in the past month alone. So followers have increased by forty-six percent. Reach has increased by eighty-four percent. Interactions have increased by fifty-four percent. Views have increased by three hundred and seventy-six percent and our net follows have increased by five hundred and twenty-one percent. So that's really exciting.
What else for which one?
For the last month.
Last month, yes.
Oh, wow, last month.
And our largest audience currently is in the thirty-five to forty-four age range, followed closely by forty-five to fifty-four and then twenty-five to thirty-four for the age ranges.
Our sales tax was like that.
And then to move on to just some examples of some posts that do pretty well for us and highlight the different types of things that we're posting, here are some screenshots of three different types. The Greg Cujo Park post had around sixteen thousand seven hundred views and that's really helpful because we can show our community what their tax dollars are being put towards and the progress that the city is making on those projects. So that's something that's really important to highlight and we get a lot of positive feedback in the comments on those as well. I know it doesn't show it here, but people really like to see that. The second one I have up there is a roadwork notice and that one got fifty-two thousand three hundred views somehow. And I think it's.
Almost everyone in the city.
Yeah. I think those ones are just good because they help keep everyone informed and people really like to see things like that. And although sometimes we're just posting a ton of those, everyone loves them and they like to know what they're going to run into on their commute. So those really help people get the information that they seek in that area. And while those are great uses, ultimately it's the people that make us who we are. And so the city wouldn't be what it is without the community members. And that's where my third post comes in with Etsuko Miller's birthday post, which had nine thousand four hundred views. This shows an example of a feel-good story that allows us to connect with our community members on a deeper level and show them that we truly care about them and not just about the different things going on in the city because we're recognizing that the people create what's happening in the city. Just to highlight some other uses, we use it for, we use social media for closures, for classes that people can register for, for different events going on in the city, job openings and much more. And our goal is just to continue to trend upwards in our growth and continue to reach out to the community in an impactful way. Any questions on?
Thank you.
Social media, okay. Back to you.
Thank you, Peyton. So that consistency is very important when it comes to social media. People love getting posts and the more consistency you have in putting things out there, then the more growth you will get in your social media channels. And so that's why it's important to post things all the time. Let's talk a little bit about our community survey. Okay, so there are a couple of line items in the comms plan to conduct a survey to collect sentiments about the city and some other related data. And so what we have done is contracted with a national polling company called Pollco. And this company does surveys for communities across the country. They ask all the cities roughly the same questions so we can compare ourselves to other cities fairly easily. And I believe in the council package is a sample of what some of those basic questions would be that Pollco could send out. When we get those results back, we can see how we performed to communities that are comparable to our own. So we don't have to look at comparing ourselves to Seattle or Chicago or something like that. So really we can compare apples to apples, which is really nice. So here's how this is going to play out. So various Lacy residents will get a postcard in the mail that has a QR code and they'll follow that QR code to take a survey online. And there will also be a paper copy for folks that can't take it online or don't want to or whatever. And the survey will be available in English, in Spanish and in Korean and should be starting right about mid-May, thereabouts. Here's an example of what one of those postcards would look like. This is really, 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 really preliminary, so don't read too much into this. But it'll have three different languages, like I said. So Pollco is looking to get about three thousand responses back for their baseline survey. And with that timeline here, the comms team will be promoting the survey before the process starts and during the process because we want people to know that this is, this is legit. We want them to see that postcard in the mail and know this isn't some kind of a scam and it's not junk mail or anything like that. This is a real survey.
How many are they mailing out?
Say again?
How many are they mailing out?
That I don't know, but they will mail out enough to get to the point where they have the three thousand they need to have a statistically significant amount. So they have a threshold that they want to reach. So then at the end of this timeline here, the report will be available from Pollco in July or so. And we'll be, of course, bringing those results to the council once those get finalized. I do want to draw, sorry, question?
Yeah, is there? We, you know, the community gets asked to do stuff all the times and we get surveys and there's usually sometimes like this will enter you into a billion iPad or something like that. Are we going to offer any, an incentive for our communities to fill out the survey? Or are we just going to hope they're going to do it all the kindness of their heart?
Yeah, we are not actually administering the survey, so Pollco is doing that and they would have all the data on who is filling it out. So if there was an incentive, that would have to come from them. That said, they've done this a million times with different communities across the country. So they have their tips and tactics that they use to get that threshold that they need. I wish I could promise prizes for everybody, but.
I was just curious.
I do want to draw attention to this period here. This is called the open participation period. So this is an opportunity for other Lacy residents who are not part of the random draw in the beginning, for them to take the survey as well. And Pollco considers that to be in addition to their statistically valid survey results. So those will be incorporated a little bit differently into their analysis. That said, we want as much data as possible and we want as many people to participate as possible. So we'll be promoting that through our different communications channels as well to get people to take that survey. And here are some examples of what those results will look like when that report shows up. This is actually from the city of Woodinville, but you can see that we've got a pie chart there with results from a question about asking about the natural environment of the city. The numbers at the bottom there are who took the survey for them and you see the weighted and unweighted results there and how they reached their target. And then the other example there in the middle is rating about Woodinville's focus on overall economic health. And there are some other things that are on that list too. But you can see that they have results from twenty seventeen, twenty nineteen, twenty-one and twenty-three. So they're trending those results and they can see how things have changed over time. So there's a lot of different numbers that will be coming out with this survey and we'll dive into those when they'll show up. Any questions about that at all? Yeah?
This is a real obvious one, but in the template postcard you showed, the Korean wasn't Korean. It was not even in like the Korean script. So it will be, right? It will not be Englandized Korean, it will be Hangul.
Yes, just placeholders for now.
Yeah, okay.
One thing in looking at the survey that was in our board packet, it seems long. Do we, do we have any control over how many questions are in there and?
Yeah, those are the basic questions that they put. They advertise it as being twelve questions, but it's more like twelve categories of questions.
Yeah, it was a crazy, I was like, I'm like, I'm going through it, I'm like, wow, this is going to take, it's going to take a little time to fill that out.
We can tweak those a little bit, but if we're going to get the best apples-to-apples comparison, then every community answers roughly those same questions and so that would provide us the best input we can get.
Well, just in the interest of, you know, really getting people to really move through it, I think we need to offer some carrots or maybe visually break things up a little bit or.
Well, it will be online too. So it's a little bit easier to go through things online when you're just click, click, clicking. And the format will be a little bit different there too.
Right.
So it will be visually different.
Even, you know, sometimes I've participated in some where they'll, they'll come in with a little message box. You're. You're almost there, you know? Only tend, you know, just to try to tug them all the way through to the end if there's anything we can do for that. Because people, I mean, our attention spans are just not what they used to be. I mean, you know, with online, you know, everything is quick, 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 and-
Yeah.
But they've done the same survey in multiple places. And they're confident they can get the three thousand responses, right?
Yeah.
What was that? I think it's asking a lot, but-
That is huge. And we don't get that kind of results usually on things. So I'd be, it'd be pretty impressive if they can really get three thousand. They go all the way through it to the end.
What's Woodinville's population? What's Woodinville's population?
Oh, I don't know that.
It's not as big, I don't know if it's big as if it's-
It's been up there.
And Woodinville's just one community. They've also been to Lakewood and to a number of other communities, too, that are comparable to Lacey.
Woodinville's thirteen thousand people.
That's it?
And that's all?
Woodinville's tiny.
Thirteen thousand.
We've got some big lots of Woodinville.
Lakewood's pretty close, wouldn't you say?
I think they can afford that kind of thing.
All right.
When we were talking about the community survey, when we start pushing it out, if you guys could share it on your social media, too? That would be helpful just to get it a little bit further and people know that it's legit. That does seem to be useful.
We're almost to the end of the night. We are also highlighting here some other goals for the communications plan in terms of language access. So one of it is to create the language access policy, which is really going to be a language access plan. We don't want to implement a policy yet. We want to start with a plan. And the other one would be also, on the bottom, create more relationships with the community. So I'm going to talk about those two. In terms of the language access resources that we have been developing in the last few months since I started working here, we have almost finalized the language access plan. We're just reviewing the last changes. It's going to be instrumental to implement all the things that we want to work on and create for the whole staff, for the whole city, and the community. I have also created some posters. One is for the community so that they can know what their rights are when they are interacting with us, when they're requesting a service, or with really any interaction. So that's like the minimum standard according to the civil rights law. And we have these translated into eleven languages. We have also what we call, and that's an example there, where it says, "I speak." It's a point-to-your-language poster. We have a little card from Language Line, who is our vendor. But this is going to be larger, more visible. And it's just going to allow our customers who don't speak English or who have limited English proficiency just to point at the language. And then we will be able to communicate through them, with them, through an interpreter. That, it's usually over the phone. And that service is already available, but it's going to make it easier. And we have some things coming that will make it also faster. Besides the point-to-your-language poster, we have pocket cards that we're going to print and give out so they can bring them with them whenever they need to go in their everyday life. And we also have an interpreter card for the staff so that they know how to call for an interpreter, no matter where they are in their everyday jobs. Then we're also working on a language access complaint form. This is also going to help us be in compliance with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act. We are going to post it online. And it's also mentioned in all the posters on the bottom. There's a QR code. And there's also, we created an email address. It's equityandinclusion@cityoflacy.org. So they can also file complaints through that email with us or by phone as well. We have that included, the phone and the new email. And then last, I think I'm super excited about this, especially for the police force. We're going to have an interpretation app. It's the same vendor. We're just extending the contract. And what it allows is to have this app downloaded on the phone for every single staff member. And with that, they can have a video interpretation live in seconds. And what it's going to help us a lot is that it includes ASL. Because right now, our ASL interpretation is not very efficient. This is going to be very, very efficient. So we're super proud of all this coming. In terms of the community approach or the way we're reaching out to the community, we're organizing, along with other partners, the 2025, we call it Thurston Forward Summit. What we did is in collaboration with the League of Women's Voters, we've been reaching out to different organizations. And we're organizing on May ten, a summit. It's going to take place at the SPSC campus here in Lacey. It is led by the League, but it has, like, we're like fifteen organizations planning it. We're going to have a morning session with conference speakers. The keynote speaker is going to be Erin Jones, and she's doing it almost for free. So we're trying to get all that support from the community members. So we're going to have a morning session with speakers. And then the afternoon session with workshops. We have a very strong focus on youth. We're doing it with the collaboration of the City of Olympia, City of Ton Water, us, and Thurston County. And then we're going to have breakout sessions. Some of them, we're going, well, one of the breakout sessions is going to be led by our Commission on Equity. And it includes several organizations in the planning committee. So it's not just the city of Ton Water, Lacey, and Olympia. We have Carolina Mejia, the council member. She's supporting it. And then we have the Equity Coalition for Thurston County, Dogma and her staff, SPSC, some religious and faith organizations, some community organizations like the YMCA for Olympia. We have NAACP, which is the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, supporting as well. And that's pretty much it. I also wanted to give you a little bit of information on what is coming in terms of language access. Besides finalizing some of the tools that we mentioned here, we're also working on plain language, on training some of the staff on plain language so that they can review the vital documents, who are the most important documents in our interactions with our customers or citizens. Because we're going to have to, well, there's going to be a point where we will be able to translate them. So it'll make it more efficient and faster and cheaper to translate when they're reviewed and they're in a plain language. And it also improves the understanding, because the level of reading will be fifth grade for our community members. We're also going to create an internet website and add also an internet site on language access for both public and internal, obviously. And we're going to be reviewing with all the departments the vital documents to see which ones are going to be updated and translated.
So like right now, when somebody calls and they speak Spanish or Korean or whatever language it is, do they, like, how do we handle that right now?
Some of the calls, so the staff, I don't think all the staff knows. So that's a part why we are creating that card. So the public-facing staff, they do know that they can call Language Line when the people are coming here. But if they're calling over the phone, I don't think we have the capacity right now. So we will have to train them on how to make a three-way call. It is possible, and it's fast. It's the same company, the same service that we have contracted with them. It's just a matter of training the staff on how to make it happen. Because we haven't done that yet.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay, perfect.
Good evening. I'm John Koch. I'm usually in the other room during these meetings. So it's fun being on the other side of the cameras for a little bit. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about Lacey TV, our TV station that we've had for just over about a year and a half now. We are available on Xfinity Cable Channel seventy-seven. And that is transmitted in standard definition. It's a limitation of the technology that we have that were granted by Comcast. However, we also have a Roku app, a Fire TV app, and our website, cityoflacy.org/lacetv. All those are in HD. And in addition to the live streaming channel, which you can watch live exactly what's happening at any point, you can also go back and watch any of our programming on demand at any time. Our programming schedule is pretty much the same as it has been last year. We have our kitten cam block at ten AM, where we have a live kitten cam setup in Animal Services in one of the adoption kennels there. And it's hit or miss sometimes whether they've got kittens available to be in there. Sometimes they get adopted out before they go live on there. But it is pretty fun to see the cats that show up in there. Yeah. Our main kind of meeting rerun block, we have Monday through Friday. At two o'clock, we do reruns of all of our commissions. So you can see Commission on Equity, Planning Commission, Parks Board, Historical Commission, and Joint Animal Services. All air every week at two PM. Since we added on the Human Services Work Group, now Commission, we've had that airing at ten AM. But we may adjust things around to see where we can get some more primetime viewing, if you will. In the evenings, we usually reserve that time for all of our meetings live. All of our boards and commissions, including council, are all aired live on the channel. We also rerun all the shows in an overnight block. So starting at, actually, it starts on Sunday with our weekly meeting block that airs at one PM. We'll air all the meetings from the previous week back to back. So you can catch up at any time on Sunday. And then we also air those overnight, starting at midnight every night, Monday through Friday. The weekends, like I said, Sunday has the meeting block. Saturday, we take the opportunity to kind of showcase a lot of our great history talks programs we've done over the years. So usually, we pick three different episodes from the past and rerun those as they go through and cycle through those. And we try to key them up with events as they happen. So there's something that relates to a particular historical thing, like the Columbus Day Storm. We'll rerun that one on the, around that time, too. And then Friday evening, we also show history talks that, usually from something from the recent season that's been live, where we have those monthly that we record. We also have some additional arts programming that is freely available that we syndicate kind of overnights on Saturday and Sunday mornings. So if someone's watching late at night, they can catch out some classic art showcase. So for 2024, we had four thousand nine hundred and forty-five airings of different programs. Those are all individual programs that we aired on the channel, including their repeats. It was a total of three thousand seven hundred and fifty-three hours of programming that aired. Three hundred and sixty-four live programs. Those include council and all the meetings, stuff like that. Two hundred and twenty-five additional unique programs that were aired. These things like Latest in Lacey, other promotional programmes that we do. And our VOD channel, which includes the lacetv.org website, as well as the Roku and Amazon Fire apps, had two hundred and four individual VOD program playbacks. So a lot of the stuff we also, the programming that we record also is shown on our YouTube channel, where we get a lot of viewers. And we also use this a lot for publicizing stuff on social media and other avenues when we're sharing things, because they make it so easy to share and view on demand. And we had thirty-seven thousand five hundred and seventy-eight views on our YouTube channel with fifty-seven hundred hours watched over this past calendar year. I thought this was an interesting breakdown of our viewership demographic. You can see the different sections where we have our forty-five to fifty-four-year-olds are our biggest viewing segment by quite a ways. And also the most watch time. But if you break it down, there's actually the thirteen to seventeen-year-old age group has the highest percentage of the videos viewed. So, you know, some people will watch for a couple of seconds. Some people watch for five minutes. Some people will watch the whole program. So as far as the percentage of programs viewed, our thirteen to seventeen-year-old group had the highest percentage. And one of the lower percentages was actually the forty-five to fifty-four-year-old group. So it's interesting how just kind of the different mathematics of engagement and stuff works. The twenty-five to thirty-four and thirty-five to forty-four also had a pretty high twenty-five, thirty percent of average programs watched.
They have to be logged into YouTube in order for these numbers to be valid, right? So if you're watching YouTube anonymously, or you haven't logged in, or you don't, or whatever, then it wouldn't-
I think as far as the demographic breakdown, it wouldn't apply. The total views would accrue. But if you're not logged into a YouTube account, they don't really have a, I can't say that categorically. They may have some magic to tell how old they think people are, but-
I concede you.
Yeah. From other browser activity or cookies that are thrown in there. So that is kind of a quick wrap of our video programming. Is there any specific video or television questions? So moving on to our websites, Lacey at our fingertips. In 2024, cityoflacy.org, our main website, had seven hundred and eighty-one thousand views. Our top pages were our homepage, obviously, and our utility billing page by quite a margin. I would say it looks like roughly half of our, or two-thirds of our view, or a third of our views were from those two pages. And, you know, utility billing is obvious. Everybody, you know, that's a utility customer, needs to go and pay their bill. And so they log on there and access the billing portal for that. The jobs page and contact and permitting were also fairly high. But there is a big difference between utility billing and jobs. It drops about a hundred thousand views for that. But those are all pages that we feature in our toolbar because they are our popular destinations. We try to make those things easy for people to get to. The pie chart there is kind of an interesting thing on how people access. So on the desktop, we have over sixty percent people accessing through a desktop web browser, laptop, or something like that. About forty percent are on mobile. And then about one percent are using a tablet. And less than point zero one percent are using a smart TV. Looking at kind of the same stats for Lacey Parks, it's a much different picture device-wise, where, you know, three-quarters of the viewers are using mobile devices, using their phones to access that. And only a quarter of people there are using the desktop, with again, about the same tablet and smart TV usages. I think that one of the differences is we've recently implemented some filtering, where we are filtering out visits that come from our city hall IP addresses. So we've isolated those IP addresses. So we're going to take out the staff views. So looking at the 2025 numbers, we should have a more probably accurate picture of how our community is accessing the webpage. And I would expect it to be more like what we're seeing on the Parks side, which all goes to tell us that we need to focus on our mobile website accessibility and usage to make that as functional for people as we can. There, the Parks homepage visits are also, you know, up there, three hundred and sixty-two thousand views. Again, most of those are the homepage, two hundred and thirty-two thousand. Events are the, oh, sorry, thirty-six thousand. I was looking at the wrong page. The events are the next. So that's all of our recurring events where people are going to find out about our great Parks activities. July third's fireworks is certainly one of our biggest events and also one of the biggest traffic drivers on our website. We see a big spike every year from around July first to July fourth for everybody that's looking for information on the July third's fireworks, July for, you know, Fourth of July fireworks rules, all that kind of stuff. So that's a big traffic driver to the website on both websites. Spring pun fair also got about sixteen thousand views last year. And then community center reservations, so people looking to utilize our community resources there. So that's just kind of a quick snapshot. If there's any questions on website, I'd be happy to try to answer those as well.
All right. So to wrap things up, the coming months and years will be, thanks, John, will be working to increase the readership for Lacey Weekly. As I mentioned, that's a newsletter of a different kind of timeline. We're also going to take a hard look at our- of a different kind of timeline. We're also going to take a hard look at our social media channels and what's working, what's not, and what tools can we use that we aren't using already. We're going to assess Lacey life as well and look at the future of that tool and some changes that we can make there. The website needs a revamp. We'll have to make sure there's a clear guidance for staff, for all pages, for our standard look and feel of our our website. Homepage needs to be refreshed, too. We'll be working on getting other departments well-established on the Intranet as we roll forward and putting more resources on the Intranet as well, increasing engagement and usefulness of that tool. We want to explore another community academy, the first one, which was a great success. We'll see what happens here with a second one and what what we want to do with that. There's other tools that I'd like to explore, including maybe possibly some type of a city blog. And we'll also look at some maybe push notifications or some other ways to get the word out about things. And we'll be coming back to the council with the results of the community survey and the branding guide, as was mentioned. Veronica will be here with the Language Access Plan as well. And the last thing, which is at the bottom there, is an update to the city's comms plan. So just as we presented an update tonight, we're going to have to update the entire plan here pretty soon and at least get that process going. And that will be quite a process to govern over five years. So with that, any questions at all? I do want to say thanks to the team here. I feel very lucky and very blessed to work with Jenny and Donna and Peyton and John back in the booth and Veronica as well. Everybody here is very professional, very knowledgeable, and I'm very lucky to have this team here and
I agree, I do.
Be able to get things done for the betterment of the city.
I have a quick question, and I know this has been discussed through the Commission on Equity on on having community ambassadors specifically around businesses or other areas where, you know, people have different languages often shop or go to. For example, I go to, I get my hair cut at a place where it's 100% Spanish-speaking. I'm the only one there that doesn't speak Spanish, but everyone else that comes in there, you know, it's mainly Spanish. And I'm thinking, what a great spot for us to have a QR code in Spanish that could captivate people there as they're waiting and having, you know, one of the business owners there to sort of be an ambassador. And I sort of asked if they would be even be interested in something like that. And they said, oh, yeah, we'd love to help, you know. So just, you know, because they're talking to people all the time who are maybe, you know, the Spanish is the only language they can speak, and they can maybe answer some questions and whatever and help direct people and, you know, put in the right directions. And there is, it was interesting, because they had quite a few questions for me during, especially during this time right now. And I think it'd be it'd be great if we could give them some information. But then there's other stores that we see around town that are focused more on, on, you know, our our different subsets of our population. And it'd be great to contact them and see if they would also, you know, be interested in being ambassadors. So that's just something I've thought about. I know I've talked to the city manager about a couple of times, but I think it'd be a great communication tool and a community building tool.
Yeah.
And it would also be very useful for an emergency situation. Those community ambassadors could also be like a liaison in their own language with their own community, because we don't have the capacity, like, we could have interpreters for maybe the two top languages, which are Spanish and Vietnamese. But if there's a Russian, or Chinese, or Vietnamese, if we have those community ambassadors, can pass along those messages in emergency situations. So that would be also very useful.
And the ambassador program is something that is being talked about and worked upon. And I'll refer back to Shannon for a quick update on.
Yeah, just a brief update. That is certainly on the Commission on Equity's work plan for this year. So we are hoping that we will continue to work through the commission and have a recommendation for council by the end of the year.
Perfect. Great. Anyone else have any questions?
Okay. Thank you. Great job.
Thank you. Really good job. It is so comprehensive. That's a lot of work.
So now it's, I'll turn it over to Troy for 2025 budget amendment update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. It's always a little intimidating presenting after the Communications Department, but we certainly appreciate their help. As you could see, there's lots of support for the Finance Department and utility billing. You have before you a staff report that has been, we've been, we've made it accustomed to come before the council and provide updates on significant budget amendments, one to, you know, keep the transparency high on our budget process, as well as to maintain the integrity of the budget. I do want to highlight just a few of the more significant items. The first I'd like to highlight is a concept that we've started about our violations bureau. So we've begun discussions with Thurston County District Court to take over that service for us. Quite honestly, it's not a good match with our department and our classification. If you think about customer service, utility billing, then you throw in violations bureau, law enforcement, judiciary process. It's just not a really strong match. And there's a lot, it makes a lot of sense to have this transfer to the county. They obviously are experts in this area, as well as they'll have a different level of economies of scale. So like I said, those discussions have already begun. We think this may be a cost of up to 75,000 per year. This will be an interlocal agreement that we would like to bring before the council here in the near future. Another one I want to highlight is a new position in our Social Services Department. The specific position is the Lacey Veteran Services Hub Coordinator. I think you're aware and you've heard through the budget process, we're basically taking professional services and turning that into an in-house position. And that is actually being recruited as we speak.
So obviously, the last model we had was we contracted services. But it was, we had a full-time position, and wasn't there a half-time coordinator as well?
Yeah, for volunteer coordinator.
Volunteer coordinator. So is this budget amendment just for one of those positions? Or are we doing about the other?
There'll be, both those functions will be overseen by this coordinator position, and and we'll be covering both bases.
Okay. So replacing the two with one for.
With employee, that's employed by the city.
Okay. And are we confident that they're, that we can go to one and a half, down to one, and still build it?
Yes, because we also have, you know, just the volunteer programs becoming more robust, we also have support from our other partner agencies as well.
Okay. The next one I'd like to highlight is an $84,000 amendment related to our Labor and Industries retro program with AWC. For a little more background on that, these have to do with our workers' comp claims. We actually use the services from AWC to manage those claims on our behalf. It is a pool of various cities and members within that. Really, it's about mitigating risk. Sometimes we receive, in fact, most of the time, we receive refunds from that. But this happens to be a period where we're experiencing higher claims across the state and the membership. So we actually have to contribute additional funds. And this is a settlement from the 2021 year. So if you think about Labor and Industries and workers' comp claims, it's on a three-year rotating year or period. So this is 2021 again. But, you know, really, the message I want to give the council is, we've talked about the high cost of labor and benefits. This is certainly an area that has been rising for us. The way LNI rates work is the state sets a rate for various work classifications. Then individual employers pay a, pay those rates in addition to an experience factor. And our experience factor has changed quite drastically in the last three or four years. In fact, if you look at 2022, we paid about 95%. So that's about a 5% discount against the adopted rates. We peaked in 2024 at 1.48, so we paid a 48% premium on those rates. This year's experience factor for Lacey is 1.43, so we're paying 43% in addition to those rates. You know, the trends across the state, there's really, it's really coming from three different areas. One is law enforcement. PTSD claims are very high. Those are generally disability-type claims. Another area that we're seeing increases is, one, the duration and the actual amount of full disability claims that are being awarded. And then the third is just an overall increase to claims in general. And it's, like I said, we're not alone. It's happening across the state. So but certainly a significant increase in terms of our cost of benefits.
So I happen to be rare, by chance, be kind of an expert in this arena, because I'm in charge, I'm the chair of the retail, Washington Retail Services Retro Program. And it's, so there's a lot going on right now. But this, this 2021 year is a year that hit many programs from across the state. Because you have to remember, it goes to three years in advance. So there's a, so you have three years to close out the claim. And if you don't close out in three years, that's where they set the, you know, all the costs at. But that 2021 year, obviously, is the start of, we're right there in our COVID. And we saw this happen a lot on the unemployment security side. There, it caused a big backlog, and there's a huge hit to to that. But the state didn't address it on this side of it, right? Because so you, you know, it got hurt, it took way longer to see a doctor, it went longer to get treated. You know, there's all these things that pushed all that out. And so that three-year horizon that usually have to close a claim, they didn't, couldn't get there. And so it, this was a big, big deal. And the problem is, is it has a lasting effect. So to get back down under that, you know, it takes a while. And so this this will have a long-term impact, you know, going forward. Because like you said, you're always three years behind to be able to figure this out. So we had definitely, I looked way into this, and there's some ways you can help mitigate some of these things. And I have no idea if if this is being administered in-house through AWC, or if they actually hire another administrator to actually do it. And there's a whole other bunch of strategies going on, because it's a, it's a big, big deal, and it's costing employers a ton of money. And so I had a couple of questions for Rick, and I know you're going to follow up with them that later.
Yeah, I have a little bit of that information, Mr. Mayor. So it is handled in-house by AWC. I think they have a staff of five or six, mostly claims coordinators, but there's also a safety slash training person. There's also just kind of the member services portion of that. So this is a pretty robust program. It really focuses on getting employees back to work. Even having an employee come back to work on light duty is, it reduces the amount of the claim. There's also potential, higher potential for refunds when an employee returns to work or even stays on the job during an injury. But there's also a robust training program as well, safety, that type of thing, too. So, but yes, it's.
Well, it's interesting. We can chat a little bit, you know, at a later date, too. We'll just chat offline.
Sure. You bet. Switching to some good news, we've found a partnership to redo the surfaces of our tennis courts, Arena Vista. So the Thurston County Pickleball Club has volunteered to pay for that. Obviously, there's a pickleball interest in in that, but this is really in advance of the Washington Senior Games that takes place here in Lacey. In order for them to actually have an adequate amount of courts for the, that tournament, they are rushing to get that done before the the games take place. So that's an $85,000 expense, but fully reimbursed by the Thurston County Pickleball Club. We need to add about $400,000 for the Here Grant. That is the Home Electrification and Appliance Rebate Grant. Turns out, your finance director can't count to four. I thought there was three grants from Department of Commerce last year, but there's actually four. So this is one that's totally on me. I just missed that. We've actually received those funds, so it's fully funded, but we do need the expense side within the budget. There's a couple different amendments related to the Seventh Avenue and College Roundabout. This council did identify $1.3 million in funding and reserves for that project. Part of that reserve, $300,000, is actually in the in the current expense fund, and then there's a million dollars in the street fund. We're simply going to amend the budget to transfer that into the arterial street fund for that project. I do want to mention an amendment that's actually not in the staff report. It came to light, or we started those discussions after the the agenda was published. But we're going to start purchasing equipment for the maintenance of Keel Park Phase 1A. So we are actually, I think, actually this weekend, we ordered a flatbed truck to stay ahead of the expiration of the state contract for that vehicle. But we also need a mower, we need an ATV, we need an equipment trailer. We're going to look at that towards the end of the summer. You might remember, this was a, an issue that the city manager discussed during the budget process. We do need a position for that, additional maintenance of that park, as well as the new police station. And we wanted to wait till after mid-year so we could see where we're at in terms of revenues and whether we could actually afford that. So we are going to wait on the remaining equipment, the mower, the ATV, and the trailer, until we could actually see what's happening after the mid-year report. There are a series of amendments related to the debt issue for the Police Department. One, there's a payment that we're going to make in December, so we didn't have that budgeted. And there's also reconciliation to the exact amount of the bonding, as well as bond costs, and, you know, the transfer of REIT or real estate excise tax for that payment.
How much were you originally guessing that payment was going to be? And what, and I know it ended up being considerably, it ended up being less?
Um, yes or no? So we, the, well, it depends on when you're asking your question. So when we first started talking about the debt for the police station, we were looking at about 1.25 million, which was about half of our projected REIT tax collections. But the final payment is right around 1.3, 1.35, so just slightly higher than that 1.25 amount. We borrowed a little bit less, but we're paying a little higher interest rate. That's just what the market called for in terms of when we were pricing bonds. So we actually only borrowed 1 point, or 16.4 million. We thought we would borrow 18, but we increased the interest rate. The bond buyers were willing to pay a premium on that, so we had a premium of about 1.7 million. So we still received our 18 million for the for the project. But so that annual debt payment's about, again, 1.35.
So the, is it, is it the 640? Oh, I'm looking at the wrong, okay, I'm looking at the wrong stuff. Because the the general obligation, the bonds have been issued, so the first payments can come out in December.
December.
So we know that number, and it's that 645004 plus the 395, that's not.
It's a smaller, since it's only partial year, it's a smaller payment than year one. But the next 19 payments will be at that 1.35. So.
I'm like, wait, your math is bad enough.
Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah. Yeah, the the structure, you know, you're really based on the market and what the bond buyers actually want. But typically, in that first year, the bond buyers actually want, but typically, in that first year, we're only paying an interest-only payment, but there is a bit of principle, too. The next one I want to highlight, and I actually don't have a lot of information, but it's really kind of follow-up on the mayor's comment from, I think, two weeks ago, in terms of our, our meter reading system condition, and we have here also Christie Wolf, who is our financial services manager, where our utility billing manager position is vacant, so Christie's been kind of pulling double duty. But, you know, we certainly want to address the, the failing meters, we also have legacy meters in the ground that need to be outdated as well, so it's all just to say, we certainly want to take advantage of, you know, the mayor's thought that if we actually either hired staff or hired outside help to just do one big push to get those, those meters kind of caught up, so, don't have a lot, but, you know, wanted to make sure we're available for, for questions, but we're gonna work on that when we get a chance here, to kind of put a concept together for the council to consider in terms of how to tackle this problem. We really can't do it with the existing staff. We have lots of day-to-day, month-to-month duties, and we certainly discover, we just, it kind of becomes a secondary task to change those meters, so certainly want to thank the council for their support on that. The last amendment I want to brief the council on is the first payment on our Public Works Board loan. We're in the process of drawing down a ten million dollar loan from the state for two different projects, their PH treatment projects for two different water sites, the Madrona and the West Side well sites. We do have an interest-only payment coming here on June first, so about thirty-five thousand, but, you know, just really wanted to get it on the council radar, that we're in the process of issuing debt, and we will be starting those payments. We do have a table there at the bottom of the staff report that shows where we're at so far in terms of the volume, or actually the dollar amount of the amendments that we're aware of currently. That's about five point five million, a lot of capital in there, a lot to do with the debt issue as well, so it is higher than what we'd expect, but, you know, really, we have some big, big-ticket items within that.
Or, or is any of these budget amendments on dollars that we didn't have set aside that we're searching for, right? Or is, do we have everything sort of accounted for, and it's?
For the most, most part, we do have it accounted for. Again, the, the Keel Park equipment, we're still looking a little bit there. We'll have other amendments that, that will come up between now and September, when we bring the ordinance to council, but, you know, the good news is really our, our ability to fund these through reserves and things that the council have identified, so most of that does get funded through those reserves and, and the commitments and the assigned reserves that the council has identified.
I mean, obviously, the, the Keel Park Phase One project, that is, you know, we're half million dollars, is, that's a big, that's a big one, but I guess you're just gonna take the end-year savings. Have you, did we figure out what the final end-year savings was?
Yeah, it's about, it's about five million. Rick actually prepped me for this like three weeks ago, so.
I was gonna ask.
Rick knew you were gonna ask, actually, I knew you were gonna ask, too. Either you or Councilman Greenstein would ask the savings, that's been our tradition, but, yeah, it's about five million dollars, and there are a lot of moving parts within our budget, but I tried my best to identify kind of significant sources for that, and I think there's kind of three main sources. So there's expenditure savings, so I think I actually mentioned at the retreat that I thought we would save about a million dollars in salaries and benefits just due to vacancies, and that's right about where it came in. We had some other things, like economic development, investments we had budgeted, I think we had budgeted about seven hundred thousand, we only spent about three fifty, so there's three hundred fifty thousand dollar savings there. In terms of, on the revenue side, taxes were about seven hundred fifty thousand higher, maybe a hundred thousand, as you saw from the year-end reports, so that was nearly a million dollars in, in additions to cash. We also had about one point, it wasn't quite, no, it was about one point five, one point six million dollars of reserves that we repurposed. So the public safety sales tax that was approved by Thurston County voters, that allowed us to find permanent funding for two different areas within law enforcement, one, the succession planning positions, we funded five positions with that tax, well, we actually funded nine positions, but five existing positions with that, that new revenue source, but we were funding those out of reserves, so we had a bottom of one point two-five million dollar reserves for succession planning. We also found permanent funding for the mobile outreach team, that's a contract service. We had to reserve about four hundred thousand for that, so we repurposed those reserves. So it's about a one-third, one-third, one-third in terms of that sourcing, so again, expenditure savings, repurposed reserves, and additional revenues funded, that five million dollars.
So as a general rule of thumb, I think we do a better job than most agencies in general, not just locally, just in the state or nationally. So when it comes to the Violations Bureau possibly being transferred to the county, sell me on that, because I'm struggling with it.
Well, and it is, it's, it's, as Troy mentioned, it's, it's one of the things, it's, it's a one-off on our line of service, it's a, we also, we eliminated, the limited term employment that expired, and so we don't have as much capacity. And then the economy's a scale, working with Thurston County and their district court services to be able to provide that service, and it's more seamless, and so we're not having to do that one-off as well.
Is it more in line with, like, collections or, or debt, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's the Violations Bureau, so again, they're going, they're going out through either court decisions or fines, taking those in and processing, if they're not paid, then they do the collections piece of.
Yeah, okay. So, I mean, us, I mean, it's gonna cost seventy-five thousand dollars, and so if we were to hire somebody for seventy-five thousand dollars, they still wouldn't be able to do the job, as, as well as them.
Correct. That, yeah, it wouldn't cover a full position.
Isn't that seventy-five thousand, though, offset, because we're, we're doing that work now, right? So, I mean, we're paying someone to do that work now.
Right.
I mean, there's an offset for that seventy-five thousand, it's not really all new expense.
Partially, we've already absorbed that reduction in costs, so as Rick mentioned, we had a, a limited term employee.
Okay.
That term ended last, at the end of last October.
Okay.
So part of that, part of this recommendation comes from not filling that position, or extending that position as well, so we've kind of already absorbed that expenditure reduction, so to speak. But we will still receive a hundred percent of our violations revenue. It is a relatively small amount, if you take that amount, it's split out into six or seven different sources. We pay various state functions with those, but, you know, these are violations that come from, you know, parking or traffic violations, that type of thing.
So my, the one thing that I just want to make sure we're keeping an eye on is, is making sure that the, they'll, they'll have the capacity to do this, because it's not, I mean, it sounds like City of Olympia is gonna be using more court services, and so that's gonna add a strain there. I'm not sure, I have no idea if they're going to do this in-house, or if they're gonna transfer over there, but it's something to keep an eye on, and it's also, I think, a concern, court costs now are, are more of a concern for me going forward, because of the additional strains gonna have on the court system. There is an economy of scale, but you have to be able to scale up to do it.
It's a little backlog, right?
And then the other thing is, is, you know, we've, we've, we've gone through a contract, negotiations with Thurston County in the past, but we've always had another opportunities there, and the county knew it, and so it's always sort of gave us a little balance to make sure we were, we had some, right? And now that's gonna go away.
Well, and we're currently in conversations with the county about how that transfer and what an agreement looks like for violation services, so we're working with them already, just like we work with our current contracts for district court services, as well as probation. We are aware of the decisions and the processes that the City of Olympia is looking to address their municipal court services, and eventually going into some type of agreement with the county, we're monitoring that, we're having conversation with all parties. And so currently, just as for council awareness, our current contract with district court is, will be renegotiated for twenty twenty-seven, so we'll start those conversations in twenty twenty-six. They'll be doing a rate study, and so we'll be able to be a part of that process, and we'll be talking to the county as well on that future conversation for court services, the holistic pitch.
Yeah, I mean, your, your comments are the much more global viewpoint, that, I don't want to diminish what Violations Bureau is, but it's a relatively small part of that contract. You know, you talk about DUIs and trial, jury trial services, I mean, that's a much bigger capacity issue in terms of looking forward, but, yeah, point well taken.
Anyone else? Thanks, Troy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So our last agenda item is the for and against committee appointments for the Metropolitan Park District ballot measure. Dave's gonna sort of update us a little bit on here. I was, well, this is the second time we've, we've gone, you know, through this process, and I was trying to think back to the last time we had to appoint a, a for and against committee, and I kind of remember, it was like kind of the last thing, we, we had to do it real quick, and it happened, and so I, I wasn't, I don't remember it as well, and so we just.
I don't remember us doing it even.
Yeah.
I'm sure we did.
And part of that process is, is the city has, has the ability or option to be able to appoint the for and against committees, and each committee has, is, has a maximum of three individuals. If, if the city doesn't, then the audit defaults to the auditor to do, conduct that process. So this is an opportunity, and it was done back in the previous time it went out for Metropolitan Park District measure. It was kind of a short, short notice and call for applicants, but the council did appoint a for and against committee back then.
But did we have more people than three, or was it, was it kind of an automatic?
No, I think it was, if I, I'd have to go check with Shannon or Liz, I think it was probably two or, two or one, and something like that.
Yeah, so there really wasn't a decision-making, that's why we don't remember it.
Correct, correct. And, and in this case, the clerk's office identified this, they issued notice call for applicants, and the city did receive a total of six applicants. Four of those applicants were, were interested in being, serving on the committee to, for the for, and the two of those applicants were submitted to be considered for the against. And what they'll do is, once the council appoints this committee, then we will notify the auditor's office and all the communication with the community will be from the auditor's office about the time period and things, for them to pull together their information to write their for and against statements to be included in the voter's pamphlet.
Yeah, so, and I've already sort of made a little bit of that recommendation, just as a heads up, there's two on the against, so there, there's the two, right? So a, a decision had to be made on the for, and the, looking at the for, that I thought made the most sense was Mark Brown, Wendy Goodwin, and Rachel. And the reason why I, I'm leaving off Yvette here is that Yvette is also, has decided to run for city council.
Yep.
And so I didn't feel like it was appropriate then for them, for her to be on a committee at the same time that's to be on ballot measure with that. So it, it just, to put that aside, the other were very qualified, made a lot of sense to me, and, and so that's what I, I did going forward. I, that was sort of my recommendation.
Yeah, so we thought, set it up just very similar to advisory board appointments, where the mayor can recommend, and then the council confirmed with an action tonight, and based on the action tonight, they will include this with the filing with the auditor's office on May second.
So that, that is my recommendation, that for the, we, for the MBD committee appointments for the no vote, we're gonna appoint Cassandra Wykov and Charles Beck, and for the yes-for committee, we're gonna point Rachel Morata, Mark Brown, and Wendy Goodwin. That's my motion.
Is that a motion?
Okay, that a motion?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Is there any other discussion?
I would say that's, that's really a good option regardless, but, yeah, I totally get it, I'll support it.
Any other discussion? Then all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion, yeah, carries.
And I, also, just if I can, maybe that's five minutes, and also, because, because we're going in, there's always been some questions about, you know, as we go forward with the ballot measure of MBD and that boundary between, you know, how we talk about the MBD, especially in city facilities, and with the public disclosure commission, and of course, as you recognize, if we change the agendas in the previous meeting, can reflect public comment restrictions on, on speaking for or against the ballot measure, as well as talking about it with the guy. So I wanted that, Dave, during the night, to kind of give a quick overview and answer any questions the council may have related to the provisions of the disclosure commission.
Thanks, Rick. Yeah, more than anything, it's just an opportunity to make sure nobody has any questions. I did want to highlight the change to the council meeting agenda last week that the city clerk's office put together, and that is to just provide notice to the public that use of these facilities for expressing support or opposition, even during public comment, which is a very awkward thing, it's not something that this council can allow. And so that they're on notice, there's gonna be signs up, there were last week, it's on the agenda, I think, and I think there's a recommendation for, for the mayor to perhaps before public comment, just if, if, last week, there was nobody signed up, but if there is, just to give a gentle reminder to the public that, that would be, they would be stopped from commenting if that comes up. And I'll be the one that can raise my hand and take the heat for it, but I think just giving the public that notice. So I wanted to make sure that council was aware of that.
Didn't realize the public, I know we couldn't, but didn't realize the public can.
Yeah, it's allowing the use of public facilities to express an opinion, so even in public comment, that's, that's a no-no. It's, again, it's, it's an interesting way to think about it.
And so usually, on the public comment, I'll, I'll, I'll see it, and they'll have a little what you want to talk about, and so hopefully, that will give us the first indication. But I guess if there's, if I look at it and I see if there's any question about, I'll make sure I say something.
Yeah.
But the, the question I have is, so, like, there's a lot of activities that go on in our parks, so are you saying people can't be in our parks and say yes or no on, is it extended to?
I'm ready to gazebo Iraq.
Trying to provide counsel as to what the law says, right? So it's not, but, no, I'm not, I'm not saying that, no, I don't think the law supports that. What's important to remember is that whether it's city staff, elected officials, whomever, using public facilities outside of the normal and regular conduct of those facilities is, is what we would, we need to be careful about. So being in a park, if the park is open to all sorts of public activity, if an individual that happens to be a city employee, or happens to be an elected official, is exercising their individual rights in a park to express some sort of opinion, totally fine. It's not using the position, not using any favor that could be benefited from that, or a benefit derived from that position, that's where we would really get into trouble. So, yeah, make sure, for any staff member, they just need to make sure that if they're doing anything to support this, they are on their own time, they do not have their City of Lacey, you know, swag on, council members do not have their council hats on, those sorts of things. And, and again, I mean, there can be some nuance in there, so certainly, yeah, if you have a question now, certainly, but call me anytime to talk about these sorts of things if they come up.
So don't wear your City of Lacey shirt around promoting.
And, and for anybody. And, and for anybody to, again, exert their influence in order to get a particular reservation to to have some function there, couldn't do that. But if, if a particular, you know, if an area is open to the public generally for that general purpose, and that's normal routine conduct for the city, that's great, that's fine.
And I know I was going to talk about this. It's, it's one of the reasons why I didn't bring it up for another call to be in support or against for the council members that weren't a part of the original motion. I was going to, brought that up, but Dave sort of said, well, just a second, let's, let's talk about this. And so, of course, I default to our council when it comes to that, and so that's why I didn't bring that, that motion back up. So.
It was already voted on and it's done.
Okay.
Before we adjourn, this just in from Tom Water, their, their transportation benefit district extension won by 76.4%.
Well, good for them.
That's pretty impressive numbers.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, well, with, with that, we have reached the end of our agenda. So without objection, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned, and as always, you keep classy, Lacey.